So we're running down there.
Are we? We are.
Okay, call the roll please.
Councilmember Will Coxon.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Somerville. Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance.
Present.
Six present and one absent, there's a quorum. A council, when you are speaking, please use the mic. The mics are tied into Zoom, so no one can hear you if you don't.
I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Simmons.
Support.
They got a hold of it.
Hello.
Is this on?
To excuse Councilmember Simmons, all in favor?
Ah.
Oppose?
Hello.
We'll pause a moment to get or check.
Hello, oh, yes, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. Hi.
Thanks, Joe.
Um, public comment. Do we have anyone?
Mayor, we still need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm moving too fast, thank you. Um, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Support.
It's been moved to approve the agenda as written. Carter?
Need to speak into the microphone.
I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Not hearing me? Oh, I'm yelling and speaking into it, yeah. Is that better? Is that better? Okay. Uh, I really thought I was talking louder now, okay.
Okay.
We'll take a vote on the motion to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There are none, okay? We will ask now for public comment.
Hello, my name is Joseph Friggi. I just wanted to take a quick moment to introduce myself because I'm applying to be on the YDDA. I'm applying for this position because my family has a deep history of being involved in Depot Town and the community. They're property owners here at Forty East Cross, and I've been involved in Depot Town since I was a kid. So I just thought this would be a great opportunity for me to make an impact and, uh, and, you know, be involved in, in the change, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in person that would like to make comment?
Like an old cowboy, it's good to be back in the saddle. I'm happy to be at another council meeting where we can see each other. As all you council people know, I have no friends where right and wrong is concerned, none at all. If I go to the dentist and pay him to extract the tooth, I look for him to service me. And if he can't service me, I would expect him to return my funds to me. Concerning the DDA. Likewise, the police department. If they cannot provide the services that DDA pay for, then I think it's right that the city manager should return their funds to them. It's only honest and fair. And I would hope that council would support that honesty and fairness coming from the city manager.
Power. I'm gonna talk a little bit about power.
Bible talks about power, and it says, "Power is dangerous in the hands of a fool." We have a lot of people in the city, in the state, the county, and this country with a lot of power. But power, in the Bible, it says, "It's dangerous in the hands of a fool." We had two high-speed chases in the city of Ypsilanti in less than six months. Less than six months, we had two high-speed chases. Now, the first chase, in my estimation, if it had been handled proper by administration, it's a possibility that we wouldn't have had a second high-speed chase that ended up with a lady losing her life, family mourning, and children grieving. The first chase, I don't talk about the first chase. According to bystanders, a car sped to the residential area, and a little child had to jump out of the way for safety. But this car was being chased by a police car. That same car went eastbound in the westbound side of Michigan Avenue with the same police car chasing it. How reckless, how unsafe. And in my mind, how criminal was that? Luckily, nobody died in that chase. But guess what? It could have because the car crashed into a house. We have police officers in the department that want to do good police work. We had, they are young and very impressionable young men. But they cannot be productive cops if they do not have proper training and command. After all, commanders gives commands, military style. Commander gives commands, and patrolman follows orders. Now, there are, there are, in every state that I've gone in, there are policies pertaining to chases. Except a few southern states I've gone in, there, there isn't any. But these policies pretty much details and outlines the same identical thing. And what we need to do, we need to look at these policies. That, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you can see them. You need to look at these policies because this nonsense that's happening, it should not be happening in the city. You want to cut me off, Lois? You want to cut me off?
He's asking me, um.
It's been over three minutes. Well, okay, okay, uh, 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 the last thing I'm gonna say. Being legal, legal redress with the NAACP, I will be forming a letter to them concerning the chase that the lady died in. That she shouldn't have died. She shouldn't have died. And you guys are legitimate people, and what I'm saying, you're legitimate folk. I want you to take the MC Hammer approach. You're too legit to quit. And guess what? I'm saying that is hammer time.
Thank you, Mr. Tucson. We appreciate your, your comments, thank you. There anyone else?
Okay, council, there's three individuals participating virtually with their hands up. The first is Alyssa Newsome, I'll allow them to speak now. You'll have three minutes to address council, you just need to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Alyssa Newsome, I'm joining today because I'm interested in joining the citizens. I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head. But in regard to the development, I'm one of seven individuals that I believe was being considered. Um, I just want to say that I've been a, not a super longtime resident, but I've been in Ypsilanti for about seven years now, and currently studying my master's of public administration at Eastern Michigan University. And, um, I had previously done work for the Fair Housing Center Southeastern Mid-Michigan, and generally have been involved in housing advocacy, um, housing advocacy in the area as well as in the greater southeast Michigan area. Um, so I'm just enthusiastic to help out and gain some experience working in a kind of intergovernmental collaborative setting between citizens and the municipality. So just want to introduce myself and say hello.
Thank you.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Jesse Miller, I'll allow them to speak now.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. So yes, Jesse Miller, Ward Two resident and the Ypsilanti appointee to the Board of the AAATA, though I'm not here for buses tonight. Although I did want to inform you that I was appointed Board Secretary, so I now serve on the Governance Committee as well as the Service Committee, and I look forward to speaking with you all in that capacity soon. And I'm also really looking forward to discussion regarding the CBO Committee. But today, I'm here to let you all know how excited I am to see how the continuing work on Ypsilanti's transportation infrastructure, including roads and sidewalks, and how that's progressing. I wanted to thank you all, and especially city staff, for all the work you've done over the past several years to make Ypsilanti a place where people want to spend time and not just drive through. And as I know that you've got some work, a presentation coming, and as you're all embarking on this new phase of work, I want, I would encourage you all to maintain a focus on everyone who moves in and around Ypsilanti and not just those with the luxury of a car driving through. I hope that this can be an opportunity to focus on the, on those people in the city because so much of Ypsilanti is welcoming to pedestrians. And I commend you for getting Ypsilanti recognized as a bicycle-friendly community, but there's just still so much work to be done. And I'm hoping that this new phase can lay the groundwork, especially for converting those, the hostile highways of Hamilton, Huron, Cross, and Washtenaw that currently enable cars and SUVs to just speed unencumbered from end to end through our city into some two-way streets that would actually allow people to move around the city from neighborhood to neighborhood. I mean, anyone who's been walking east down Cross and tried to cross Adams knows that little dance that you have to do to try and get the attention of a car that's only looking east for incoming traffic and doesn't see the people coming from the west. So I think this looks like there's a real opportunity here to rethink the, the the transportation infrastructure in our city, and I'm really looking forward to following your all progress on that and the, and making, just improving the, the safety and quality of life for city residents. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Counsel, the next individual with their hands raised is Alice E., I'll allow them to speak now.
Hello, hoping that everyone can hear me. My name is Alice Elliott, I'm also applying to be on the commission for 945 Clark Road. And I submitted my application late because I misunderstood how the votes were counted toward me when we did a Zoom call for participants on the commission. So I appreciate y'all's patience with that misunderstanding. I have lived in southeast Michigan for most of my life, Ypsilanti for the past six years, have done a lot of sort of activism and networking and organizing around various issues here, including housing, the environment, other social justice issues. I did my research on collaborative, collaboration, specifically around environment and environmental justice. So I, and I care very deeply about housing affordability in our community. I have a lot of feelings and opinions TM about it, and would be really excited to be on this commission. So thank you for hearing me out and for making this happen. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Desiree Simmons, I'll allow them to speak now. Yeah, three minutes to address council.
Hello, thanks, good evening, everyone, this is Desiree calling from Ward Three. I'm calling primarily around the CBO, both in terms of the Ad-Hoc Committee for 945 Clark as well as the CBO ordinance in general. So just to say that I did apply to join the seat, the Ad-Hoc Committee, and especially as a representative of ready for that. And so I hope council will consider adding me to that committee. And then also just the ordinance, you know, now that the ordinance has sunset and thinking about making sure that we make changes to it, that both make it more clear as well as strengthen it. But then I think that because as we're seeing a lot of participation and people entering into the process and kind of learning about and wanting to get involved through this process, that it shows really strong desire for more opportunities for folks to engage more directly. And so I think that we can see that already in these early stages with the CBO. And the meetings have had pretty good turnout, although wanting to also think about how to do more focused outreach in the areas that would be directly impacted, and especially those with more low-income residents. That, that's still an area I see of growth from the outreach efforts. So hope that as council considers the coming, the next CBO that will be in process at 220 Park that, think about how the outreach can happen in that space to improve upon from this one. And then the other thing I'll just say, just because Jesse mentioned about the roads that I really want to speak to as doing some of this road work, like how to really think about all the people who will be in that space and not just prioritizing cars. And I think that as, you know, the city, but other places continues to grow, that we need to be considering other modes of transportation besides personal vehicles. And so bringing that into the planning process is really important because it's, it is pretty dangerous as a pedestrian and as a person who is a primary pedestrian, since I don't drive, that I recognize how dangerous it is and how dangerous it is for me to go out with my young child. Because we need a lot more, because drivers just don't stop. Even at a crosswalk, they don't stop. And so, and they don't look. So however, we can make it so that people who are in these huge cars, getting bigger and bigger, so that they can feel safer in those cars, that they are actually looking around them and noticing what's happening. So hopefully, that's part of these plans, guys thinking about the road changes.
Ms. Simmons, that, thank you very much, your time is up. Your three minutes, thank you. Okay, seeing that there are no other, uh, audience, people to participate, we will move on with presentations. Mr. Akers, we have you for a road presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council, can everybody hear me? Great.
It could be louder.
Okay. So the purpose of this roads presentation, we wanted to first give an overview of the city's road system, our funding and some of our processes. We wanted to take a look at some upcoming projects, look at the impacts of those upcoming projects on our major and local road fund balances. And more specifically, we wanted to take a look at what to do with our 2022 County Road Village Funding Dollars. OHM is going to give a presentation, what they're gonna give an overview of the situation, and we'll, we'll be asking for guidance towards the end of the presentation. So first, before OHM gets, gets going, I wanted to take the time to introduce our staff. Everybody at council knows our project manager, Bonnie Westler. From OHM, we have two individuals, we have Kent Early, who is now the Chief Operating Officer of OHM. And then we have Rachel Jackson, who's our project manager and city engineer, primary consultant who works with, who works with us on these road projects. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Rachel Jackson to give an overview. Rachel, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Ron, hi, Council, nice to see everyone. Kent is also on the line, and he will be assisting with the presentation. And Kent, if you wanna, or Andrew, if you want to go to the second slide, it kind of gives a summary of what the, what we're gonna go over. Okay, thanks, Andrew. Outcomes, we're gonna identify high priority road infrastructure assets, review the upcoming projects that include road, bridge, and pedestrian, pedestrian facility projects, funding that's available at the federal level and the state level, present some options for the county village, mostly geared towards potentially Ward Two, since that was the project, project that wasn't able to be done this year, and we'll go over that. And then on create, in general, create a sustainable plan to fund high priority infrastructure assets. And then next slide. And here, Kent, if you want to jump in.
Sure, thank you, Rachel, good evening, Council. As Ron indicated, my name's Kent Early, I think most of you know me. But I've been involved with the city for over 20 years now. So Rachel thought she'd kind of drag me along for a historical reference, if nothing else. What you're seeing in front of you is a little bit of an explanation. Again, a few of you have seen variations of this presentation before. There's approximately 52, a little over 52 and a half miles of the road in the city, of which a little over 40% is classified as city major, and just shy of 60% is classified as city local. And the distinction being that the city major streets are almost all of them, there's a couple of exceptions, are eligible for federal aid funding, and that is through lots, which I know Bonnie is the technical rep and attends those meetings. The city local roads are ineligible for federal aid funding, and those have been projects that could be funded with the county militia in the past to some of the bond programs that the city undertook. The city also has five vehicular bridges, obviously Cross Street Forest, which we're gonna talk about in a little bit more detail further on here, Prospect, Spring, and La Forge. In addition, there's a number of non-motorized facilities, speaking to the point about broadening the reach of transportation, including a lot of trails, sidewalks, pathways, two pedestrian bridges, and of course, the ADA ramps that the city's been working on. Finally, there's also the storm sewer infrastructure, which includes pipes and structures within the road right-of-way, and many of those in the city outlet into the Huron River in various locations. And the one thing you didn't hear me mention was water and sewer, and you can see at the very bottom of the slide here, the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority maintains the water and sanitary infrastructure for the city. Just a brief map here, obviously, showing the city boundaries and what roads are classified as majors, locals, or MDOT roadways. One of the things I would point out, because it's been asked in the past, is what about Michigan Avenue west of Hamilton? That was, as I understand it, in the 1990s, the jurisdiction for that road was traded. And I, it predates me, Mayor Richardson may know the backstory, but that used to be classified as state trunk line, but now it's classified as a city major. Thank you for advancing, Andrew. Um, you know, a little bit of background about the type of analysis that gets done on a, every other year, biannual basis. What we use is kind of a requirement by MDOT, it's called PESR, and it basically stands for Pavement Surface Evaluation and Rating System. It's used statewide, and for anyone receiving federal aid monies, at least in the state of Michigan, and wanting to get some of those local agency program dollars, they require the use of the PESR system. It's kind of a, almost a windshield survey of the roads on a one-to-10 scale, with 10 being something that was just recently built, and one being something that is almost no longer paved, frankly. Federal, as I indicated, federal aid eligible streets get rated every couple of years by SEMCAG since 2003. That's been going on, and most recently, typically, it would have been done in 2020, but because of the COVID epidemic, they, they held off here, so now they, they just did it in 2021. The local and city streets have typically been done on off-years from the majors, and we do those in conjunction with EPS. Again, because of the COVID delay on the majors, we, we also did the locals in 2021. All that data is put into a software called Roadsoft, which again, is also a requirement of the state, and it uses the condition rating and the length and width information of the roads to model the effect of varying levels of financial investment and what that does to the overall system moving forward. What you see in front of you is kind of a chart showing a little bit of the differences between 2021 and the 2018, 19 timeframe. You can kind of see good, fair, poor, and failed with a little bit of an explanation on the bottom of what each of those means from a number perspective. Starting at the left, you've got major road center lines, so how, you know, approximately 2.87 miles of good, 5.7 of fair, just a little bit less of poor, and about 7.4 of what would be called failed. You can kind of see what percentage of the roads that is, and then the local in the same condition. And you can kind of see on the far right, what's kind of changed over the last couple of years. Kind of the good roads have decreased a little bit, but the fair have increased while poor have gone down, and that has to do with some of the projects that have been done in the last couple of years. What this shows is an example of the deterioration curve. And I guess I would draw your attention primarily to the, the, start on the upper right, I should say. There's various types of rehabo, maintenance rehabilitation and reconstruction that can be done for roadways. The same can be said essentially for bridges, but roads kind of makes more intuitive sense. You get to, you know, if you look on the, the Y-axis, the up-down scale from good to bad, good could be just about a 10, you know, brand-new road just got reconstructed. The bottom right, over time, bad, that would pretty much be a zero, so the road's completely failed. And what this sort of shows is if you do maintenance at, at the appropriate times with, say, a seal coat, you could bring it back to almost pretty much a 10. If you let it go a little further, you're gonna have to do an overlay, which would be more of a rehabilitation. Many of you have heard of a Uh, many of you have heard of a talk about a milling fill. That would kind of be an overlay type of a situation. And then if, for whatever reason, you just can't get to it, it, it continues to deteriorate over time. And you kind of get to a rebuild or reconstruct. Um, you know, so that kind of gives you a little sense of what we're talking about from deterioration curve. But then I would direct your attention to the graph on the bottom left. You can kind of see, uh, from a timing perspective, the 75, uh, almost 75, 12, 75, 25 type of thing, the total failure. And what the quality drop means. So, you know, you, you get about a 40% quality drop over, you know, about 75% of lifespan. And many, many roads are in the 15 to 30-year lifespan, depending on the, um, the pavement cross section and, and the maintenance on it. Um, you know, if you can, uh, get to a seal coat during that time, you can bring it back almost to where, you know, it's almost a 10. If you continue to let it deteriorate, you can kind of see, you're kind of get down, you're starting to go, okay. You know, each dollar renovation here, and that's kind of a rehab or an overlay. If you continue to let it drop in that, that 12% timeframe, that bottom there. You know, it kind of gets to almost four to $5 from a reconstruct. And I, I would almost say with the way inflation is impacting construction material costs, that that $1 renovation might save as much as $6 or $7 now. This, uh, this graph is a little bit dated. And when I say dated, uh, the, these numbers are really from about a year ago. Which, you know, kind of surprising, but things have really increased from an inflation perspective. Could you advance it, Andrew, please? So what, what this shows is kind of where things are at from the city system. Uh, if you look at the 2018, 19, and, and the reason we've got the two years there, it's a combination of the majors, again, done by SEMCAG and the locals done by DPS and OHM. We're at about 4.15. Well, the good news is, and there certainly been some substantial investments in the last three, two and a half to three years. Uh, the actual average PESR rating has gone up to 4.19. What I would really draw your attention to is the numbers on the side of the right. And what that kind of shows is on an annual investment over the next, say, approximately 10 years, eight to 10 years. If you invest approximately $300,000 a year, you can kind of see, based on deterioration curves and some modeling, what will happen to the road system. A lot of the road is going to fall into that rehab category. And you can kind of see it goes up 500, 800, a million, all the way up to 2 million. Which, you know, would increase it a little bit for sure and keep it consistently good. There's certainly priority, priorities that need to be, be, uh, made. And, uh, that's partially why we're here, to have you guys kind of take a look at this and provide some guidance. Andrew, could you please advance it? So just to give a little background on the road funding sources, and I, I know Bonnie and Ron probably shared much of this with you in the past. Uh, the primary source of funding is Act 51, and that stands for Public Act from 19, Public Act 51 from coincidentally, 1951. Uh, which, uh, is essentially the way the state distributes gas tax money for all intents and purposes. Uh, the city shares approximately 1.4 million per year. And that can be used on major locals. And it, it's not just for construction or reconstruction or maintenance. It includes snow plowing, saltine, catch basin repair, and even, um, cost for some of the equipment to do the same. Um, as I mentioned, Watts, and particularly the, uh, Surface Transportation Program Urban, uh, that Watts helps administer for all of Washington County, provides, uh, dollars to, to communities every year. The, in each community, based on population, based on lane miles, based on a variety of factors, gets a, a certain amount on average. Uh, the city's portion typically averages in the 360 to $380,000 per year range. Now, the city has in the past, uh, done a little trading with some other communities. And I know we're going to talk about it in a minute, but the Huron River Drive project, uh, there were some, a year or so that the city didn't collect that portion, and they, they, they kind of doubled down for, to get the money for Huron River Drive. So just if you're wondering, well, how, how come we, uh, got more that year? That's kind of the backstory. In addition, there was a county village passed, as you're all familiar, and the, the city gets between 125 and 150,000 per year. And I believe the current village is going to run through 2024. And then finally, the last two sources of funding are community development black grants and the Metro Act monies, which both of those have historically, certainly in the last 15 plus years, have gone to ramp, ADA ramp upgrades. So. Um, you probably have heard about a couple of different, uh, federal legislations. Uh, one is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and that's primarily what we're going to talk about. The other one was, was something that was not passed. That was called the Build Back Better. Uh, and there were some, a variety of different funding amounts in that, but that did not pass, at least not yet. But what did pass was the 1.2 Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Uh, and there's, there's a number of priorities in that, uh, for monies to be spent over the next five years. Roads and bridges, rail, transit, uh, ports, airports, electric grid, water systems and broadband. Um, and just so everyone's aware, uh, from a water system perspective, YCA is actively preparing for a variety of different things with their portions of that money. So. Uh, states are going to receive various funding amounts. As you can see, Michigan's estimated to receive about 10.78 billion. Uh, and some of those, uh, fundings, you can kind of see the categories there and the ballpark amount for the state of Michigan. There are, some of these may be just grants, some may be a combination of grants and some repayment necessary. There's still a lot of details to be worked out. Now, what's in front of you here are, um, just kind of an outline of some planned upcoming road improvement projects. A couple of them are a little bit more fixed than some others, but we wanted to get, get these in front of you. In 2022, there's not been a project chosen yet, a county village project. And again, I know, uh, we're going to talk about that a little bit, and I know Ron and Bonnie are going to speak to it as well. In 2022 and early 2023, we're going to start construction on the Forest Street Bridge. That is the one where the cities received a significant grant from the state, uh, local bridge program. And it got pulled forward in an effort to keep that bridge in the rehab category and not have to go down to a complete reconstruction. Uh, planning to kind of bid that late this year for construction over, starting in the winter. And to kind of get that wrapped up, uh, next, next spring or early summer. The next project is kind of a, a three-year. I, I know you've heard about this from 2022 to 2024. The M dot US 12, M 17 road rehabilitation and pedestrian facilities upgrades. There's also a significant water main project in conjunction are actually ahead of that. So that's going to be a real, uh, real, uh, lot of, that's going to create a lot of construction in the city over the next couple of years. Um, in 2023, uh, as I mentioned earlier, the Huron River Drive reconstruction project, that's approximately $4 million total cost, of which the city's gotten a couple million, uh, from, uh, various programs. As I indicated, there was, and I'm going from memory, I think it's 2016, the city didn't get their share. Uh, they kind of did a little horse trading, and I believe it was with the city of Ann Arbor. So the city of Ypsilanti is getting more money in 2023 for Huron River Drive than the typical 350 or 360 to 380,000. Um, in 2023, 2024, uh, the, the project identified is the South Adams Street from Michigan to Catherine with approximately a $300,000 cost. And then finally, in 2024, are a couple of preventative bridge maintenance projects on La Forge and Factory that were packaged together from a cost savings. And again, those are approximately 740 to 750,000. Andrew, could you advance? Thank you. Um, kind of getting a little bit into the detail on Huron River Drive, the reconstruction. As mentioned, the total project cost is approximately 4 million with federal aid. And again, that's STPU funds, a little over 2 million. And some highway improvement program urban funds have an additional 120,000. Um, the project limits are approximately Cornell to La Forge. And as I'm sure you're aware, back, uh, in 2021, and this, this has been talked about for quite some time, um, was a road study diet was done in that section. And it just made sense at that point, based on the information from the study, to reduce that section of road from four lanes to three lanes from a safety perspective. Uh, and that will have a dedicated left turn lane with one lane in each direction. The project also includes, uh, where they call the sidewalk or a non-motorized facility on the north side of the road. Uh, and improvements to the south side. If you've certainly been out there, you certainly see that there's kind of a, a trail along the north side of the road. Uh, again, because of what's being done from that road diet, that south curb line's going to kind of stay where it is. The north curb line's going to move in a little bit. And that provides opportunity for a non-motorized, uh, walkway through there to help eliminate people having to walk in the street. Uh, and the city is currently pursuing a tap grant for additional funding, uh, for those pedestrian upgrades. Rachel, I'm going to let you kind of take over, because you know more about some of the details of, uh, this design than I do.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Thanks, Ken. Uh, so the western portion is, the western portion, portion of the project begins at Cornell. And it is going to be, it is going to start on the west side of that intersection. Um, and there may be some pavement markings that we need to, uh, update to match the four lane down to three lane. So as Kent mentioned, the northern curb line is going to come south a bit, which will give room for, uh, five-foot wide sidewalk on the north side. Uh, that is, there is a resolution tonight for submitting a tap grant for that. Uh, this, this image shows the sidewalk continuing, but the plan is to have the sidewalk end at that crosswalk. There is no sidewalk on the, uh, west of Cornell on the north end. So there is not, um, a huge need to go that far, although there is a bus stop. So, um, we'll have to see what, what, uh, what Watts, uh, will, will allow for that. But, um, the driveways on the north side will get extended to the curb, the new curb line. And there will be some, um, um, pedestrian, uh, signal, signal upgrades at Cornell pedestrian and the turning movements for the left turn lane. And I think that's it for this slide. Uh, Andrew, if you want to advance. Thank you. And then so moving east, uh, Oakwood, there is, uh, signal work that will also be done to accommodate for the new, a lot, the new, um, um, cross-section there, pedestrian crosswalks. And, um, still the walk on the north side, extending the driveways on the north side as well. I don't think anything further on this slide, Andrew, if you want to continue. And then really, this is the area that has shown the most need for the sidewalk on the, on the north side. Um, as you can see, just from the aerial that, um, there's a lot of non-motorized on the north side, probably from the apartments trying to get to eastern Michigan. So the sidewalk will continue all the way down to the La Forge intersection. Um, and once again, just the north, the north curb line is going to be moving, uh, more south. And just a three-lane roadway with the left turn lane in the center. Andrew, if you want to keep scrolling down. Okay, here we go. And then this is La Forge, the reconstruction will go through the La Forge intersection. You can see there is going to be some improved pedestrian crosswalks there too. Um, connecting to Little Forge, uh, sidewalk going north, but also the plan is in the tap grant to additionally, um, improve the sidewalk on the south side all the way to Anne Street. I believe that is a five-foot wide walk, maybe somewhere between five and eight, but we want to improve that for, um, the tap grant. And we will also make sure that the sidewalk connects to that bus stop on the north side. It is not anticipated the sidewalk point to advance beyond that. Um, there is no sidewalk currently, um, that it would connect to, so it would just terminate on that north side at the bus stop. And I think that is the most improved, oh, the, the dedicated left turn lane at La Forge Road. Um, and I think that's, that's about it for Huron River Drive reconstruction. Okay, Ken, if you want to pick up here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rachel. Um, what, what is here in front of you is, um, a table identifying some potential projects could be done as part of the 2022 program. Uh, a couple of years ago, a section of North Washington from Cross to Emmett was chosen by council. Uh, however, since that point, that section has deteriorated where rehabilitation really isn't an option. If you think back to those graphs where we're showing kind of the maintenance and rehab and reconstruction. We were just in the, the timeframe where it was really dropping really quick. So unfortunately, it's in full replacement or, uh, reconstruction mode. But what's identified here are six various segments of roadway that DPS is requesting some input from, from you all on. Uh, you can kind of see the segments in question and lengths, what's being proposed. Again, these are kind of rehabilitation, milling fill, or it's called milling overlay. And you can kind of see the ballpark, uh, probable project cost. Um, you know, the one thing that's, you see highlighted, we would be doing some pavement cores to determine the final mill and overlay depths. A lot of that's predicated on what's actually there. Andrew, if you could, uh, advance it. Now getting into the bridges, um, I, I know over time, a few of you have asked me about the conditions of the various bridges and, you know, what. Typically, if you go to an MML event and they start talking about, uh, infrastructure, they'll say, well, your bridges need to be inspected every two years, and that's absolutely correct. Uh, and then you come back and you hear us tell you, tell, whether it's us or DPS, tell you, well, there's a few bridges we actually inspect annually, and it has to do with condition. So I'm actually going to start from the bottom up. Uh, both Factory and La Forge have had some significant, uh, rehab and maintenance done over the last, I'm going to say decade to maybe 12 years. Uh, I think La Forge is probably about 10, 10, 11, and Factory was a, a handful of years ago. They're both in fair condition and on the biannual or every other year inspection, uh, process or schedule. Then moving up, Prospect was actually, um, had some maintenance done on it back in, I'm going to say, 2007, 2008 timeframe. Um, it is not in very good condition and has already been load rated. So due to that, uh, in kind of the criteria that M dot and the Federal Highway Administration require, we inspect that one annually. Uh, Cross Street is in the same condition, um, from, from an inspection annually. Obviously, uh, Cross Street Bridge gets used a ton. It's the, one of the entrances, the main entrances to Depot Town. Um, so we, we've looked at some things on that. There's going to be a follow-up slide here talking about some of the, um, the costs and some of the things that are being looked at. Uh, it's a very unusual structure with a, a waterway, obviously very close to Depot Town. And there's some options that we've been looking at. And then finally, the Forest Ave Bridge, as was indicated previously, that's going to be getting some rehab late this year, early next year, to bring it into fair or even good condition. Uh, unlike La Forge and Factory, uh, a number of years ago, where you pretty much just took the top off and put a new deck on. Forest is going to get some more heavy-duty rehab. There's going to be some pier cap work, um, and a few other things done to, uh, bring it up to, up to snuff. And that will put it back to being inspected every two years. Andrew, could you advance, please? Again, the Forest Ave Bridge, uh, you can kind of see the city received funding for 2023 rehabilitation. Uh, current need is to fix the substructure. As, if you drive across it, the deck actually isn't in that bad a shape. And if you're just driving, you may think, oh, this is great. Uh, but as you can see in the, the photo in the lower right, and I think some of you have seen prior presentations on this. Some of the pier caps and some of the piers are not in good condition. So although we are going to do some patching and deck work in the approach, most of the work is actually going to be underneath. And it's, uh, approximately 1.4 million dollars with the city cost being about 370,000. Um, that includes engineering. And for the local agency bridge program, typically it's 95.5, uh, 95% federal, uh, for the construction cost. But, uh, to get into that rehab category, it, you get more points and more opportunity to get the funding if you increase your match. So the city elected to do that. It was a council decision. So you receive the money, the 1.4 million. So, uh, and that city cost is the 10% plus engineering, which is not covered. That's always local. So. Andrew, if you could, can, continue, please. Cross Street, as I mentioned. Uh, and again, uh, if you've been out there, sure you have, there's, it's, it's in rough condition. I, I'm not going to sugarcoat it for you. Uh, it currently needs full replacement. And, um, you know, that, is that a 6 million? Is that 7 million? Uh, again, every year, the cost seemed to go up, and they've been going up a lot recently. Really need to get that road fixed within the next few years. Uh, the load restrictions, it's already load rated, as I mentioned before. They're going to continue to, to tighten up, which means it's going to be tougher and tougher to get some of the trucks into Depot Town, at least from that side. Uh, as I mentioned, the Michigan local bridge program is a, is a good funding source. There, there are three categories there. Uh, preventative maintenance, which is what, um, Factory and La Forge are going to get. There's the rehab category, which Forest is getting. And then there's what they call the big bridge category. And Cross Street, at the same time, the city chose to apply for Forest. We also applied for Cross for Big Bridge. Didn't make the cut at this point, but got some good feedback on what needs to be done to make it eligible. The only issue is because of the limited funding. Now remember, some of these numbers are pre that Infrastructure Investment Act. They pretty much were maxing out between 2 and 3 million. Even in the big bridge program, because they were getting less than, I believe the number was under 25 million statewide for bridges. So they were only able to do a handful of big bridges. And if one bridge took seven or eight million, that would eat up a substantial amount. Now those numbers may increase, maybe it goes up to three, four, four, five. A lot of it hinges on how the state chooses to distribute the road monies coming from the Infrastructure Investment Act. On Cross, preliminary design has begun because of the fact it pretty much needs to be torn out. There's some environmental clearances and some studies that haven't got to be done. As you all know, the tridge runs under the bridge and there's two sets of columns in the water. What we've been looking at from an alternative perspective is to reorient the under part of the bridge. It wouldn't impact the roadway or wouldn't turn the road, but would reorient a couple of things to only have one set of columns in the water. Because that, that obviously causes scour, it causes issues with the river itself, and it just makes the structure more prone to erosion. So part of what we're doing and working with, with Ron, Bonnie and DPS is trying, as well as City Manager, is trying to figure out, one, when to apply and what sort of funding plan would be needed to realistically have a shot. Because if you take a $7 million project to them and say, give us two or three, they're still going to say, well, what about the rest? So. Andrew, if you could advance, please.
Yes, a question. It's saying that repair within two to eight years. Is, am I understanding that's what it's saying? Am I reading that correct, that it's going to take that long to repair that bridge? I came over tonight and was really like, okay, you know, do I, would I rather walk across? But anyway, is that what it's saying?
Well, we, we're recommending it be fixed at some point within two to eight years. It's not going to take six years to do it, but we're recommending the improvements be done within two to eight years. Yeah. Just from a condition perspective, the concern being the longer you get into that or even longer, you're going to get to such a load restriction that you're probably only going to be able to allow passenger vehicles across it. There won't be any trucks allowed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Hold on one second. This is Prospect. What, what you're seeing here is Prospect, as I indicated a number of years ago. There were some improvements to the joints. There were some improvements to the sidewalk, the guardrail and a little bit of patching on the deck. But even at that point, the, the city knew that we were going to ultimately have to do some sort of a superstructure replacement, very similar to Forest. A little bit more intense in a certain couple of areas technically. But same sort of thing, kind of recommending that, oh, that improvement or repair happen in some between a five and 12 year timeframe. There are load restrictions on it and DPS has done a good job of keeping those signs in place. And we're going to have to continue to tighten those and do, even do some interim preventative maintenance. That's what PM stands for, to seal out moisture. The, the preventative maintenance that was done again, I'm going to say 2007, 2008, was essentially fixing those joints at that point. And those joints last eight to 12, 15 years. So without that, water gets down into those beams and causes a whole lot of problems. And the unique component of this bridge, unlike the others, all the other four structures in the city which span water, this spans a railroad. So there's a lot of coordination needed whenever you're, you know, dealing with anything close to the railroad. So this would definitely take some coordination with the rail entities to do. So. The next, the next couple of slides are pretty straightforward. This one being La Forge, as I indicated, those are kind of bundled together with Factory from an economy and scale perspective. And you know, the problem is for these roads, bridge contractors, they're usually looking for slightly larger projects than 350,000. Well, now, just from their perspective to mobilize in the site. So a combination of these two projects is about 740, 750, with the city cost being approximately 180. And that's 5% plus again, the engineering, which isn't eligible. What that does, the preventive maintenance will extend the service life and help delay kind of dropping into that rehab perspective. So the next slide is very similar, pretty much tells you the same thing. Factory got 240 from the preventative maintenance, the local bridge program. And again, bundling with La Forge, again, 740 with the city total being 180 for the two. Where again, same sort of story, you can kind of see really good picture there of the joints and the neoprene stuff and those, that, that's the waterproofing that prevents water from getting in to those beams and really wreaking havoc. So. This slide gets into the non-motorized aspect, at least of the, the, the funding. City staff, obviously, and Bonnie in particular, work very closely with the non-motorized committee and determine the needs in the project plans. The city currently spends approximately $100,000 a year on upgrading sidewalk ramps to meet ADA standards. There is a typo in here. This says as of 2019. It really should say as of make sure I'm giving you the right date here. As of 2021, the city's at approximately 50% of the sidewalk ramps are ADA compliant. So it's been a long process. You were, we mentioned, it's been about 14, 15 years. But the city's making a lot of progress in their ADA program. In addition, there's the pedestrian bridges, of course, the tridge between Frog Island and Riverside Park. And that's, you know, when the, when the Cross Street Bridge is undergoing whatever reconstruction, it's going to need pretty much the tridge will be closed and that's probably going to be an ideal time to work on that. The Riverside Park Bridge, the Waterworks Park Bridge, and of course, there's plenty of non-motorized trails that have been done. So, um, next slide. Here are some of the planned upcoming non-motorized projects. Again, the yearly sidewalk ramp upgrades, again, the two programs, the CDBG program as well as the Metro Act program. The 2022 Park Ridge, Park Accessibility Improvements near the Park Ridge Community Center, those are, those are going to be undertaken. And then of course, the I-94 Huron Street interchange, the non-motorized crossing. And that one, I, I know for a fact Bonnie is heavily involved in, I'm not sure she can speak to a lot more of the details of it than I can. And then finally, storm sewer infrastructure. The, the city has a lot of storm sewer infrastructure within the city-owned right-of-way and on city-owned properties. Whenever we're doing some sort of capital construction or rehab project, we take a look at that. You know, can, can manholes and catch patients be rebuilt? Can, can we do a variety of things, you know, any sort of green infrastructure, things of that nature? We try to come up with as many ideas as we can and try to stretch the dollars as far as we can. For those of you that weren't on council in May of 2018, the city was awarded a, what was termed a SAW grant, a stormwater asset management and wastewater grant. And the, this one from the, for the city was strictly focused on stormwater. It was approximately a $418,000 grant with a 10% match. And it concluded last year. And it helped fund mapping of the overall storm assets and to purchase some asset management software that Ron can certainly update you on. The, the big issues with stormwater funding in Michigan is there's currently no specific funding source. Some states, anyone that's talked to any of your elected colleagues from outside of the state of Michigan. Some states allow stormwater, what they call our term stormwater utilities. That is not allowed for a variety of legal reasons here in Michigan. And I'm sure Mayor Richardson can speak to what the MML has been trying to do for years in terms of advocating for some legislation in that regard, but currently there's no specific funding source. So again, from that, that, with that in mind, we've tried to address as much as we can during any road or capital projects that are going. Then finally, again, from a funding perspective, it seems pretty clear, well, I shouldn't say clear, it seems very likely that storm sewer infrastructure may be eligible for funding under that Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So with that, I, I guess I open it up to questions. I guess I should ask Ron, do you want to take questions now? Or would you like Bonnie to do her presentation?
Why don't, sorry, why don't we have the city do our presentation? We'll go through it real quickly, then we'll, we'll answer questions.
Ron, could you speak a little bit louder?
Nope. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, if, if it's okay with council, we'll have city staff go through our presentation and then we'll, we'll answer questions at that point. That's okay. So I will be brief. What we want to talk about is primarily some of our projects that are anticipated projected beyond 2024. And talk about our financial status and, and give some additional options for the 2022 county millage funding. Andrew, if you could move to the next slide, please. So we have a spreadsheet listed with some of our projects. I'm not going to talk about the ones through 2024 because OHM already touched base on those. But I do want to highlight that we have a projected project for Harriet Street between Huron and First for 2025 that we are incorporating into Watts Transportation Improvement Plan. And then for 2027, we have Cornell highlighted as a project. These were projects which were identified in Watts Long Range Plan. And we're going to continue to work towards implementing them. We are going to add in some future projects and maintenance as opportunities arise. And as, as we get a clearer picture of what our funding is going to look like during that time. With the infrastructure package, there's still a lot of details which need to be worked out. And you know, to lack of a better way of saying it, we're going to be chasing whatever money is available from that road package that we're eligible for. We so we have listed just some of our larger road projects in this item. Where we do look at the non-motorized aspect of all these road projects through the city's complete streets ordinance. So that, those factors are considered on each and every project. As OHM has indicated, we do invest $100,000 per year in sidewalk ramp and ADA compliance projects. And we also, as we're moving forward, intend to have further discussions with the non-motorized committee of the Planning Commission on ways to make sure that we're incorporating into the budget, the implementation of the city's non-motorized plan. So these are things that we keep up on, that we're planning on moving forward with. Andrew, next slide. So one of the things that I did want to talk about was our financial status with our 202 and 2003 funds. And how it impacts some of these future, how it's going to be impacted by some of these future projects. So for our major road fund for 202, we have a relatively large fund balance at approximately $3.4 million. Some of the, several of the large projects, specifically Huron River Drive, is going to further deplete that fund balance down to about 1.5 million by the time we get to 2024. It's difficult. We anticipate costs for these projects. We work with OHM based on best information available. I know due to COVID and inflation, our project costs, we've seen increases by around 30% over the last couple of years. So our, and, and in this spreadsheet, our projections do reflect these cost increases. The annual expenditures of our 202 fund are about 1.5 million. And our goals are to maintain a minimum fund balance of at least $750,000, which gives us some opportunity to leverage different projects and opportunities as they come forward. In addition to some of our road projects, we are also anticipated investing approximately $100,000 per year into the city's storm sewer system for the maintenance projects which are highlighted in that stormwater asset management plan as we look to implement those. Looking at the spreadsheet after the operational expenditures, we have about $700,000 that we utilize for, for capital projects. So we have not heard any details yet from MDOT or Watts regarding the federal funding allocations from the new bill that was passed in Congress. So we, we are keeping our ears open. We're keeping our eyes open. We're waiting to figure out how to move forward and what we're eligible for, for as well. Andrew, next slide, please. So. Did we, is, is the local bridge slide up above? Oh, there we go. So for our local project, so as Mr. Early had indicated, the federal dollars will likely only be for federal aid eligible roads and bridges, which includes exclusively our major streets. We do not anticipate that there's going to be any additional money available for local roads. And of course, as you know, with infrastructure funding, there's not always enough money to go around. Our local road system, is that a stage based on PESA ratings where unless we start to make investments soon, we may need to do some of those reconstruction, more expensive projects in the future. So our goals with that are to do more rehabilitation preventative maintenance work. So we have a large fund balance in our 2003 fund, which is geared towards local roads. And starting next fiscal year, we're going to be look to spending some additional money to make sure that we start doing some maintenance on them. So next year, we're going to be requesting approximately $150,000 for a local road preservation program. These programs are intended to extend the life of residential roads. The type of repairs that you see with them are crack sealing, micro sealing, partial replacements, and also slurry seals, those, those type of projects. As I had indicated, our goal is to extend the life of those local roads. Our projections, because we're in the very preliminary stages of identifying how this program is going to get started and what improvements are going to be made when, we are anticipating $150,000 in the first year, but it may change based on, based on our findings. Next slide, please. I'll, I'll touch on bridges just briefly. OHM did a very good job summarizing some of the standard conditions of our bridges. We were very fortunate to get the local bridge grants that we did because they are very, very competitive. They, for our MDOT region, you know, just to kind of give perspective. For our MDOT region, the rehabilitation projects, like the one we're seeing for the forestry bridges, summer, there's only one selected. And that includes Washtenaw County, Lansing, Ingham, a number of other areas in the state. So we're waiting on direction on the federal bridge funding law, act that was passed and what those rules are going to be and how they're going to be allocated to local municipalities. As we had indicated, we're local, we're working on the preliminary Cross Street Bridge study. So we're trying to get organized, prepare for this project as much as possible in anticipation of this. This program, as they had indicated, is going to be in the $7 million ballpark. Federal dollars don't fully cover the cost of these construction projects. And as Mr. Early said, you know, we're, we're anticipating that we're going to have to kick in a couple million dollars potentially. So we're going to, we're going to look at this. We're going to come up with a plan and, you know, look at ways to handle that. Next slide, please. So the last item I, we wanted to highlight is the 2022 County Funding Millage. They had explained why we were unable to do the selected project for 2022. And so what we'd asked OHM to do was identify some rehabilitation projects. So when we originally went through and highlighted these back in 2019, we looked to identify rehabilitation project in each ward. So for example, we identified South Adams, which is Ward One project that'll happen in a few years. Oakwood, we did a rehab project on the summer. That was our Ward Two project. And then the North Washington project, which deteriorated, we're unable to do, was a Ward Three. So we, we asked them to identify some replacement projects in Ward Three. We did, using this, this same pot of money in 2020, also do Cross Street from River to Prospect. To get that rehab. So replacement project is one of the options that we can utilize this money for. But we also wanted to highlight a couple of additional options for council, just, just to give an option to further some of the goals that we have in some of our plans. So, so option A is replacement. Option B, because of the uncertainty, some of the funding, we could utilize the additional money to fund an existing project. we could utilize the additional money to fund an existing project, like Huron River Drive, which is going to be a very expensive project for the city. And also, option C, one of the ideas that we had put together that we wanted to bring before councils, an option, was to set funds aside for feasibility study regarding the conversion of cross-street from one-way to two-way traffic. So we recently attended a meeting held by the state representative to try to advocate for this and push it forward. We've had some conversations with MDOT, they are proposing to do a study with the reimagined Washtenaw Corridor to secure, hopefully secure funding for the 2026 project year, to make improvements which align with that planning effort with those goals. After that initial meeting, we had some discussions with MDOT, and they had indicated that because of, you know, the large scope of what they were looking at doing, they're not able to fit the feasibility study of looking at one-way to two-way traffic on cross-street within their 2026 project. There is a potential opportunity with the influx of federal road dollars to potentially leverage some of these grants and funds to tie into this process that they're looking at. And also, this meets the goals in several city plans to move forward. So we wanted to highlight this option as well as an alternative for council to consider. Next slide, please. So, key takeaway, next steps, we're looking at guidance regarding the 2022 county millage funding, how council wants proceed. You know, we're going to be looking at making investments in our local road system to try to curb the deterioration, and, you know, I hate to say it, but infrastructure funding continues to be a challenge. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you both to Mr. Akers and to our OHM friends. Any questions, discussion, council? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. Mr. Akers, I just wanted clarification on this last piece about the county road millage funding. Do you need some type of direction from us, like tonight, on these options? Or how long, how long do we have to make this decision about like what direction we want to go in?
So, if council needs additional time to look it over and consider it, provide additional option, we could set it for the next council meeting.
Oh no, I was just asking if you, so you wanted us to give direction tonight?
If council wishes to do so, we can, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Oh yes, Mr. Morgan.
So it don't sound muffled, I'm gonna just pull it down. Just sort of sound muffled, if you don't mind. Thank you so much, Mr. Early. Thank you so much, Ron, for the presentation. I just have two questions. One is, what is a pavement core, and how does that affect cost?
Ken, I'm gonna let you take this one.
Absolutely. So a pavement core is typically, when you come in, it's a machine that typically takes, it almost looks like a puck in terms of a, like almost a tube, and you'll take a, it cuts into the pavement, and it goes down approximately a foot to a foot and a half, depending on the thickness of the road. And you can see what's actually there, in terms of the existing cross-section of the road. And how can it affect cost? If a road is supposed to be, say, two inches asphalt on four inches of concrete, and you do the core, and it turns out there's eight inches of asphalt on a foot of concrete, your fix may change, and that may impact cost. The core itself doesn't, I mean, it doesn't, cores are a couple hundred dollars. What impacts cost is what's actually there.
Okay, so some kind of gauge or indicator?
Yep, yep.
Okay, cool. And at the end of this, at the end of the presentation, that Mr. Ayers did, he said unable to initiate project due to road deterioration. So that's the question I want to know. It says, according to the graph I'm looking at, if I'm reading it correctly, that out of the major roads, 7.3 miles are candidates for reconstruction, which is more than the 2.8 miles that need little to no maintenance. And you say roads usually are poor from 15 to 30 years, and so for our roads to be deteriorated at such a rate, like what kind of old trends, like what kind of trends will get most of our roads at that deteriorated rate for that long? Like what are we trying to, how can we avoid having so many roads in the next five to 10 years, the way we have them now?
Ken, do you want to answer that?
I certainly can. For, and certainly the mayor remembers this, back in the late 90s into 2000 and 2001, there were a lot of issues with local streets in town. And the city impaneled the Blue Ribbon Committee, and actually went out for a millage and issued a couple of rounds of bonds to essentially replace, I'm going to say 90-plus percent of the local roads, with a plan for those roads to last, again, between 20 to 25 years. And I will say, unfortunately, that first round of construction started in 2001. We're pretty much wrapped up in 2005. We are at the 20, low 20s, you know, late high teens. So you're starting to see, again, from a local road perspective, how those, you know, deterioration, you know, time and weather, exposure to weather, that's kind of what you're seeing in the local road. Now, on the major roadside, there's been kind of some years more funding, some years less funding, going back in the, again, the early 2000s, from say 2001 to about 2010, the city was very fortunate to get a number of major roads funded. Again, primarily rehabs, though not reconstructs. There's a few reconstructs, but it's really, as Ron talked about, putting together some sort of a road, local road preservation program. Again, that's doing maintenance and rehab to kind of bring those deterioration curves up versus every 20 to 25 years, doing an overall city bond program to essentially reconstruct everything.
Thank you so much for that answer. My final question is, is there a protocol, or is there some kind of system in place as soon as a road gets below the acceptability index? Is there something that kicks in once that's determined?
So the PESA ratings are done once every few years, and, you know, we have, and we track data moving forward. The goal with the local road preservation program is where we're starting to organize ourselves, identify what repairs need to be done when, and trying to catch up, and, you know, hopefully eventually get ahead of the curve on some of these maintenance items. But, but the PESA rating process, where they look at surface conditions, that's the, that's the evaluation that we use in determining how we're going to make some of these improvements.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mr. Early.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Wilcox?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this on?
Yes, it's on.
Is this on now? Can you hear that?
Yeah.
All right. Had a number of questions here that, that I think may have been answered, but I just want to clarify this. So in our funding pools, the Watts money in the county millages is typically used just for the local streets, because we have alternative funding, but it's not?
Well, so the county millage funding, so the county millage funding, the rules of it are very broad. You can use it for really any type of road improvement or engineering study. When we came before council in 2019, part of the conversation that we had with regards to prioritization, and that council made the decision on, is they wanted to focus on the major roads in the city that were not federally aid-eligible. So a lot of the projects we identified fit that criteria.
And to your other question about the Watts funding, Watts funding is federal aid funding, so that goes to our major federal aid roads. So local millage can go for just about anything, as Ron said, but Watts is restricted to federal aid.
And how do we access the money from the IIJA? You're keeping track of that, but is that going to be in terms of grants? Or some other means, are, will there be, how will that be dispersed? Or do we know at this point?
You're talking about the legislation that was recently passed in the funding? So that's a point that Ron had made earlier on, we don't know yet. So the federal government is still, has a good idea of how much money is going to go to each state government, but then it looks like each state government is going to decide how to distribute a large portion of that. But then there's, of course, a separate pot of federal funding, but all of the rules for how that is going to work is still being worked out, unfortunately.
This microphone is having too much fun by itself. In the preservation program, that's budgeted for 150,000, but the expenditures that that's going towards are 575,000 per year. Can you clarify how we're dealing with the difference on that?
Yes, I apologize. So the 575,000 dollars per year expenditures are what our current operating expenditures are out of our 203 fund, which is our local road fund. So the 150,000 dollars would be in addition to the 575,000 dollars. That, that would be, the 150 would be more of a capital expense than operational.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Can you hear me? I know, I don't know how, is it on? Okay, I don't know. It doesn't seem like it's working.
It's been turning off every time, but.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
Okay, you can hear me. Cool. Um, this is mostly relevant to the question on our options. It's hard, I'm trying to flip back between A, B, and C and look at the price, but I don't see a price for, is the feasibility study for the two-way conversion going to be somewhere around like 60K or something, or do we know?
We don't know for sure yet, because of course, we haven't issued an RFP to find out, but we believe it's going to be somewhere north of 100, but probably south of 200.
And that's just for West Cross, that's not?
No, that's, that's for the one-way pair. That's for West Cross, Hamilton, and Huron.
Okay, so the whole thing, the whole loop. Gotcha. Okay, I personally would like to prioritize that. That's my comment and feedback for those three options. I've ever, I, the moment I got on city council residence, in not just my ward, started expressing the need to consider converting back to two-way, so I would personally like to prioritize that.
Of the choices that.
I guess, I'm, okay, sorry. I think my, my question would just be, so I am no roads expert, so I want to ask the experts, what would you recommend if you were to tell us what makes most sense with the revenue that we have and priority? Out of these options, what would you recommend, even, you know, you can't tell us what to do, but I would love to hear what you think is the priority of these three options.
It, it's a difficult conversation, because, you know, you're, it depends on where your priorities lie. I'm not going to give a clear answer, and I'm going to apologize for that out of time, but.
I'm sorry, because I don't have a clear answer either.
So, so road funding continues to be a challenge. So every dollar that you put into, you know, maintaining and upkeep of an existing road, is, you almost get like a return on, because that's $5 you don't have to spend down the road, right? So, so I mean, from that, if you look at it from a cost perspective, that, that makes a lot of sense. The, you know, option B, when you look at Huron River Drive, Huron River Drive is going to be like the single most expensive infrastructure project we're going to have done in a very, very long time. And so, you know, especially with the fluctuations in construction costs that we've seen, it, it could move one direction, you know, if it moves a couple percentage points one direction or the other, that, that's, that's a fair amount of money. So, so, I mean, that, that's something to consider as well. And then for the two-way cross-street project, or two-way cross-street here on Hamilton project, with the road infrastructure package that's coming out, and with some of the opportunities that might be in the Build Back Better Plan that hasn't been passed, you know, there, there could be some options for, for funding for this. And the other opportunity with doing that project is linking it with MDOT's study and potential funding strategy for implementing the reimagined Washtenaw Plan, just fits in from a regional perspective and accomplishes a lot of the goals that the city has in their plans. So it, it really depends on, you know, where council's priority is. I don't know, Bonnie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think probably the best way to sum it up is, there's not really a wrong answer, it's just different flavors of right. So whether you're, with the first option, with spending on local roads, you're saving money. With Huron River Drive, you're helping increase the certainty on that project, that everything that we've presented to you is going to get done. And on the third up, possibility or opportunity, it's something, as Ron has stated many times, it's, it's something that we know is in the adopted plans and that the community is interested in in the past, so.
And I guess I was asking the question just to say, like, for the good of the public as well, that really, any way that we go is going to be positive in some form or fashion. It just really depends on, you know, what, as a body, we come to consensus on. I think that's really important for folks to understand, because we know we always have a funding issue, struggles when it comes to making decisions, but I, you know, any of these things would be positive for us, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I personally would like to just take a bit more time with this and maybe have some conversations with Mr. Akers and Ms. Wessler.
I, I also echo that if I had to make a choice, I would spend a little more time deliberating with the study more, and perhaps getting some more information. So I think it's another week or two, I don't think we'll hold it up that much. I wouldn't be prepared to make a choice tonight, but if I had to close my eyes, I would vote for the two-way street. Option three, or C?
I just have one question. Kent brought this up, the, the whole, I guess, operation where there was a millage adopted. Obviously, millages can often be unpopular, but has, have there been any internal conversations about possibly having to do some sort of millage to just like handle all the bridge issues? Because that's lots of money, and they, but they all need to be repaired, so.
We haven't had any internal conversations regarding a millage, or, I'm sorry, I wasn't. We haven't had any internal conversations regarding a millage, or I'm sorry, I wasn't.
I know these, I don't know if you could even hear me on mine.
Can you hear me now? No? Yes, okay. So basically, any millage question would have to come from council, an approval, you know, to take it to the electorate. Internally, we have not had that discussion. However, if council feels strongly that they'd like to prioritize that and they'd like to take it out, you know, for a question to the people, then we would begin to work on that, but council would definitely have to put forth a vote for that to start any kind of talks about that. It's off again? I just turned it on. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
All right. I had just turned it on, it goes off quickly. I, I was saying, it's so good to see you. Thank you for your presentation and you and Rachel. And we really appreciate the work that you, that you put in for the city. Thank you. And hello to everybody else there at OHM. It's been a long time since we've seen or heard from you guys.
Appreciate that. I will definitely pass that along, Mayor. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe, stay well, and stay warm.
Yes, ma'am. Gladly.
And I say that as we all sit here shivering. Okay, uh, thank you. Mr. Halinga, is Ms. Willis with us?
Um, no, Mayor, I don't see Ms. Willis here in person, nor is she on the, uh, on virtually.
I didn't talk with her the last couple of days, so I will check, okay? I'm sure she'll come back. Well, if that's the case, then we will go on to our ordinances. And Mr. Jones, champ, I believe you have ordinance thirteen eighty-five. An ordinance to amend chapter one twenty-two, an ordinance entitled text amendment zoning ordinance modifications. I thought I gave it.
Yep. Okay, ordinance thirteen eighty-five, an ordinance to amend chapter one twenty-two, an ordinance entitled text amendment zoning ordinance modifications. It's a short one. Yeah, whereas the city has an interest in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and whereas the city has an adopted master plan that reflects the policy goals of the city, and whereas the planning commission from time to time reviews the zoning ordinance performance with relation to these goals and general functionality, and whereas the planning commission has recommended the city council adopt the proposed ordinance changes, now therefore be it resolved that the city, that the Ypsilanti City Council approve the ordinance entitled zoning periodic update two thousand twenty-two.
You have to say someone.
That's you. Did you prefer somebody else to do it?
It was moved by councilperson Will Paxton and supported by Mayor Proten. Uh, discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Amat.
Test. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, good evening, council. I can just go over a few things really, really fast and then answer any questions. Really, this is the annual zoning ordinance text amendment for bug, for kind of bug fix type of fixes. The first one is restricting fence opacity in our commercial districts to be no greater than fifty percent opaque. Uh, another one is regarding parking structures, it's shrinking setbacks for all parking garages, creating a height requirement for all parking garages, and eliminating a distance requirement for residential setbacks. Also making them a special land use in park zoning districts. One of them is fixing a typo for maneuvering lane width. It's, that was simply a typo for parallel parking to, uh, two-tier of parallel parking spaces. The fourth one was updating the family definition and doing so specifically, we are making the unrelated occupant maximum from three to five now. And the fifth one is regarding marijuana retailers and provisioning centers. It's updating the buffer distances from facilities. It's increasing the buffer distance to one thousand feet from a retailer in the general corridor district. It, and it's increasing the buffer distance to six twenty-five from an existing retailer in the neighborhood corridor and center districts. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Somerville.
Okay, my question, oh. So sorry, I keep, okay, I'm sorry. So my questions regarding the update around fences and this fifty percent opaqueness requirement. I guess, what does that mean entirely? What, can you give me examples of fences that would no longer fall into that requirement? And I guess I'm kind of just generally curious why we're adding this in.
So in regards to examples, I, to be honest, I can't really speak of one unless maybe there's some auto-oriented uses that might have privacy fences, because they might be non-conforming and have storage of automobiles or something, or wrecked vehicles in the front yard. But other than that, I mean, the, the purpose is we want to make sure that businesses aren't putting, you know, fortress-style fences in the front of their entrance and stuff like that. We want to make sure that people can see in and out of fences for businesses, just for safety reasons mostly, and to enhance people's interactions with these businesses. We just don't want, we don't want people to put up big privacy fences in front yards for businesses. We want to make sure that they are at least fifty percent opaque, which could mean a picket-style fence where it's like equal panels and gaps. That's what fifty percent would be. Anything less could be like a decorative aluminum fence, you know, where you're seeing through for the most part.
Did you have something else, or you, were you?
I guess, sorry, just still on the fence issue. This is going to impact houses, though, like, like regular residential housing.
What was that? Can you read it? Sorry. No, it's just for the historic corridor, neighborhood corridor, and general corridor districts. Are you talking about, if, if it's adjoining? Okay, if it's, if there is a house in one of those zones, yeah, they would just, they can do a privacy fence in the backyard and side yard, just not right in front of the, the house in the front yard, which we don't, we don't even allow that in any of our residential zones either. We don't allow somebody to do privacy in the front yard in residential.
Yep. Why is that?
Why do we not? I think it's mostly a health and safety thing. It's, you know, making sure people can safely access houses or entrances to buildings, sightlines. And it, for historic structures, for example, you know, that's one of the big reasons too, is so that there's sightlines to see historic structures. Joe?
Uh, the, the other main reason, can everyone hear me? The other main reason is just the walkability factor. We require everyone to have a front porch. We want people to be able to see what's happening in the front yards of homes to make sure people aren't breaking in. And so there's, there's many reasons for the zero, I mean, we require a fence can be no higher than four feet in a front yard regardless of anywhere. So it's just more of a, it's more of a, the, the, the community that we've decided to be based on our shape of C master plan.
Well, personally, I think it's neighborly. To be, I mean, if you're blocked off, if we're trying to have healthy neighborhoods and the whole front yard is blocked off and it just doesn't add to good neighbors for me, so.
Isn't that old saying, good fences make good neighbors? Just kidding.
I hadn't heard that one. Go ahead, Mr. Amat.
Just, any questions?
Are there any other questions or comments?
Sure, I've got a lot. Go for it.
Sure, mine is related to the parking garage setbacks. Why are we changing this now? And ninety feet is a lot.
Part, part.
Ninety feet seems a lot, so what's the motivation for changing this now?
Did you say ninety feet?
Are we going from ten to a hundred?
No, we're.
Or a hundred to ten, rather.
We're doing, yeah, a hundred to ten. And for the most part, it's because of parking lots, follow a ten-foot rule for, for the most part. Unless, and planning commission can even waive that for parking lots, surface lots. If stormwater and landscaping and other methods are adequately addressed. Really, we're just, we're trying to open up a little bit of flexibility in case the city wants to build a parking garage or any kind of parking structure is built in any of our districts.
I assume that was the case. A parking lot is a little different than an up to fifty-foot tall structure, however. I think that when we were discussing the parking garage and the feasibility study, I would be more comfortable holding off on this particular element until the engineering study and the financial feasibility are determined. I don't, I don't want to do the, the baby step thing until we have those answers. I, I want to hear some other questions, so I, I mean, I could be wrong. That, that's all I have for now.
Anyone else? Mr. Will Paxton?
Okay, can you hear me now? I want to start with the family definitions. I like the, the increase from three to five. There was some confusing language in there, but I'll, I'll, I'll go over that. But as it reads, if, if you have two people in a shared sleeping space, the second person has to have another hundred and twenty square feet of space, right?
So, so it looks like, so one person needs to have, I believe, seventy feet. And then if you add a second, it, it's fifty feet for other, every other person, so.
So it goes up to a hundred and twenty square feet or a hundred and fifty, seventy square feet, depending on how many people are in that, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
And that's reflective, that's just being consistent with the property maintenance code, which our rentals adhere to.
It, it's also a building code, and we put that in there to make sure that people understood that, so there wasn't any need to cross-reference ordinances.
Ah, okay. So I have a question here for item number four of the family definition, and I have. So what's the total number for this designation? You have a collective number of individuals living together in one dwelling unit whose relationship is continuing non-transient domestic character. But there's no number there, but there is a number up on number two, so what is the, what's the limit on that?
So that's, you know, that's more a, you know, a, a functional family. In, in other words, you know, it could be religious-related, you know, it could be anybody who can say that they are a family, a cohesive unit, who have been living together and rec, you know, identify as a family, we don't put a cap on them.
Okay, so then the question I had is, follow-up question for that is, how do you define non-transient? Because it's, it's not defined here, so it's like, if, if somebody gets together for a year and says that they're a family and then people move out, I mean, how, how do you control for that?
We have never controlled for that. That's a, we don't tell people who their family is. Um, so if they say they're a family, they're a family.
So up above, you've got this, this provision for, you know, students and, and other people are are included in that, but if they declare themselves a family, then it's a moot point.
It is. But that's, that, that's been in the code for twenty years.
All right. Give it that. Next question is about the. It is about the parking garages, and so with the size of those things, is it required that there are bicycle and motorcycle parking within twenty-five feet of the entrance of those places? And is, is that proportional? If you have a hundred-space lot, do you have to provide a certain number of bicycle spots for that, or is it, could they build a five-hundred-car facility and give you two bike parking spots?
So I think you're, so you're referencing that H, the point H, where yeah, I, you know, I, I believe all that it needs to be proportional to the amount of spaces, so if there's, you know, if we need to put, I believe it's one bicycle space per four, four vehicle spaces by our zoning code, you would need to put, you know, and there's, let's say there's a parking garage that has a hundred spaces, you would need to put all twenty-five of those right in that. I, I would assume measured closest point to closest point twenty-five feet to where that first bike rack is.
Got it. So that's covered elsewhere in the, in the zone.
Yeah, that's still a standard that we would, any parking garages would need to adhere to.
I was kind of confused by the maneuvering lane width. In the, in the summary, it says to make them congruent or, but then it just seems like the two values were switched, ten and twelve feet.
Yeah, it was just simply, it was mostly just a, yeah, a, a typo type of thing. So it was, it looks like originally, so to my, to my interpretation of the code, I believe there should be a greater distance for a two-lane for, for two-way traffic and parallel spaces on each side than there should be for one-way traffic in parallel space on, on each side. I think inherently, there's a little bit more maneuvering if two, you know, cars are parallel parking at one time. It just matches that better.
I want to add one thing to the parking structure. We're only talking about adding parking structures to Park, which is all city-owned or AMU land. So Park, Park District is, is only city-owned land. And, uh, and most of these things were already in, like, we just tried to clean up a little bit of the, of the language on parking garages that we currently have, so we're not trying to add anything new except for the, the fifty-foot maximum height. Uh, but, but we are only looking to add parking structures as a special use on city land. And this would only be if the city chose to go for it, and we get to pick motorcycle spaces and bike parking spaces because it's on our land.
I guess that's it all again.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion?
I actually like to propose an amendment to the update here. Probably.
I think we should, okay. All right, um, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone to speak to this matter? Either present or virtual.
If anyone either attending virtually or in person would like to make comment on this specific ordinance, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, council may close the public hearing.
Thank you. Would you close the public hearing, please?
Sure, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the public hearing to consider an ordinance titled zoning periodic update two thousand twenty-two be officially closed. And I so move.
It's been moved and supported that the public hearing be closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have none. Oh, that's okay, sorry. Okay, now amendments or discussion, please?
Yes, I would like to, I'd like to amend this so that the section of the amendment for parking garages subsection one twenty-two dash five eighteen be removed from this update.
You make it a minute, we need to, there needs to be a second. Someone second it?
I didn't.
You didn't, or you did?
No, I was saying that I did not, I didn't hear it because I was talking about
Oh, I can repeat it. Yes, I would like to amend the update so that the section parking garages subsection one twenty-two dash five eighteen be removed from this update.
Dude, the last thing, I I need clarification. Because the last thing that Joe said was that this pertained to a certain subset of parking garages.
So there there's two sections for parking garages. It's four sixteen, one twenty-two dash four sixteen and one twenty-two dash five eighteen. One twenty-two dash five eighteen puts a cap on the maximum height. Whereas currently, we do not have a cap on maximum height. Is that correct, Andy?
Yeah, that's that's correct. It just modifies some of the dimensional stuff for all parking garages.
And then it also removes the exterior facades and parking garage fronting. Any street must be designed to achieve an architectural unity with the block. I don't know the purpose of removing that, but that was
That was just kind of a duplicate item because there is a similarly phrased item elsewhere on that list.
And also the ninety-foot reduction in setbacks.
For residential, correct.
For residential CN mid or CNSF. That's the only part I want to remove, the subsection one twenty-two dash five eighteen.
Think you'd like to remove the five eighteen completely from
This particular update.
And your concern about the the ninety-foot difference is?
What?
Well, one, we have a, we have a project that this could potentially apply to that previously we said that we wanted to get a feasibility study done for. And I don't want to preemptively start getting zoning items in line before we have that. I want to have a full discussion without things being preordained here. I think it's a thin end of the wedge, and I don't particularly like it.
Procedurally, in order to have this conversation, I would have I will, I will second it. We'll vote on this. I just want to have this conversation too. Can you give me an example of a parking garage that has a hundred-foot setback?
I think we only have the one parking garage in the city parking structure. Oh, yeah.
We have two EMU parking garages. The EMU parking garage on campus has a hundred-foot setback from every building, except for the one that it's in. The other one does not. There's a zero foot setback on it.
I have a question next. Are there any city-owned parking lots that this would even impact? Because, like, the Frog Island parking lot right here, so it would need to be a hundred feet away from this building.
Oh, if it was Frog Island, it would need to be at least a hundred feet from any R1 CNSF, CN mid. And I don't think there's any that close. So I don't think it would matter if it were to be built at Frog Island.
Okay, and then if it were, even if it were the DDA law across the tracks, or if it were Water Street, it would still need to be a hundred feet away from other
The DDA law is why this amendment is coming into place because it directly abuts CNSF.
Yeah, I I'm not supporting that amendment.
You say you are seconding?
No, I'm not going to support this.
You second it, right?
Wasting my not support for this amendment. I just politely, I just don't support it. It doesn't make sense to me.
Any further discussion? Mr. Morgan, you were not in when he read his, made his motion amendment. Would you like for him to key it?
That'd be wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Hellinger, do you have that?
Section one twenty-two dash five one eight from the parking garages portion here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's the only amendment?
Yeah. Once we get the amendment settled, we are open for further discussion.
And was sound reasoning given for the amendment?
Well, if you're asking me, I think so. It's a, basically, it's a very large setback. We're talking about an additional ninety feet. Right now, there are very few places where where one could even be built anyway. And I think it's best to be left that way.
This, okay, I don't, okay. This this closes down the opportunities for, if this goes into place right now, then the feasibility study, as it goes forward, they could say, I could put it here in places where it may not have been sizable before.
That's a possibility.
The point here is that over there, it doesn't make any difference. But what about?
No, it makes, I mean
Well, I think I think the study is particular to a location, but
It would make it so we could put one either there or there, or on Water Street. It would eliminate all three of those possibilities.
I think you can get a hundred foot, I think you can get a hundred foot setbacks on Water Street somewhere.
Well, I think after the deliberation, I would probably more likely support the will of council. I'm ready for the vote.
You're on council.
I know, but I I definitely, yeah.
Not only that, but if we're talking about Water Street, no, but no developer is going to put a parking structure on there. They don't make any money. It doesn't make sense.
I mean, I think that's a bold assumption to make, given that we're gonna have, there's gonna be federal money for
And besides the one
Vehicle parking.
How many, how many spaces could that possibly?
Besides the parking structure? Besides the parking structure? Where's our parking structure? So there are no parks. So this is hypothetical, maybe? Like, do we have any parking structures right now that this affects?
There had been, there's been talk of putting a parking structure, particularly over in River and the Frog Island.
So in case that we do, this will be in place.
The thing was that there was to have been a, some studies done. And all of the studies that were to have been done have not been done yet. And so Mr. Jones Chan is not wanting that, that that particular clause in this
Before the studies are
Before the study is done.
I think that's prudent.
Thank you so much. I'm on, I'm here with you now.
Okay.
Have we voted on that amendment?
No, we're going to vote on that amendment. I'd like to ask Ms. Westler a question. Ms. Westler, where are we on the the study for the parking structure? That is being talked about for here in in Depot Town?
So right now, as of this week, we have a couple of extraordinarily high-level concepts developed for the Maple Street lot and the Frog Island lot. And we're going to be consulting, consulting with the consultants, I believe, next week is when we, no, I'm sorry, the third or fourth is when we have scheduled for that sit-down. So we're, we're in the home stretch. We have not yet scheduled a public meeting, but that, I believe, is the next on the agenda.
Okay. So does that does that affect you at all?
We still don't have a study.
Right.
I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to be pigeonholed.
I guess that's just, that's my only question for Mr. Jones Chan is that, so you're not necessarily saying that you're against this, you're just saying you would like to wait until there, the study is complete before this would be added or this decision would be
Exactly. I don't want to be pressurized into moving forward with something that could potentially cost the city a lot of money. Just because we've done X, Y, Z steps beforehand. And I think there's a potential for that. Not only that, but not only that, but well, I'll leave it alone. But yes, I'm sorry. We don't know yet. We don't know that either. Then there's no harm in leaving it out.
Is there a, is the amendment based on the contingency of we leave this out until the study is done?
I'm also open to that. I'm a very flexible person.
Mrs. The study's gonna be underway anyway, and this may be necessary in the future. It's just, he's saying we put in the cart before the horse. Potentially, we could opt out of this option until the feasibility study is done to enact it, maybe.
The the reason why we do this is we try to do one zoning bug fix a year. Because there's a lot of noticing, it's a, it's a process. And so I understand what Mr. Jones Chan is saying, and I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying, we try to do our bug fixes once a year. This is the one. And so that's why it is is before you, in consultation with the Department of Public Services, with our planning commission, this was the time to make any changes for two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, Mr. Morgan.
Can I ask the question? Like, how feasible is it for us to potentially build a parking structure in the next five years?
We will know up to the feasibility study is done.
Ms. Somerville?
Can you just kind of share some feedback that the planning commission gave on this specific amendment? Because they approved this, and I tend to trust their very skilled judgment on these issues.
From my recollection, I don't remember there being a lot of conversation about this. It was rather, it was receptive, you know, they were receptive towards it as presented.
Most of the conversation was around the marijuana issue.
Okay. All right. Well, for the last time, I will state, I'm not supporting this amendment.
All right, any other comments? I am supporting this amendment. I believe that I think it would just be good to have the feasibility study and know exactly what we're, what we're dealing with before we lock ourselves in or lock ourselves out or whatever. Mayor Proton.
I just want to follow up on what Councilmember Morgan was inquiring with Mr. Jones Chan. So if there is a way to, you know, reword the amendment, are you open to that?
Do you mean changing the zoning language or in order to wait until we have
The feasibility
On a certain project? I don't, I don't think that that's something that we can put into zoning ordinance.
No, 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 not the zoning ordinance, your amendment, like, to leave this out until, to to return back to it, like, after the
Oh, I'm perfectly open to returning back to it. Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Myers, what, how does that, how does that impact us if we, if he were to do something like that?
It just, we have to renotice it.
To renotice it and all that.
Renotice it, put it before the plan, the planning commission again. And then renotice it for council and put it before you again for two readings.
Thank you.
So wait a minute, even if they've already approved this, you'd have to get them to reapprove it?
That's correct.
One more clarifying question?
We haven't done any concepts on that, so I can't speak to that particularly. Because there's not a whole lot of CNSF or CN mid directly adjacent to Water Street. However, it depends on where it would be.
My reading of this is if you take out A, then this ten that keeps getting brought up as that's a within those those zoning districts, but it doesn't matter. All right.
Okay, I move to call the question.
Do you call the roll and call the question, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence on the amendment. Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Five yes, one no, and one absence, the motion carries.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the original resolution? Ordinance, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. John Chan?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify with the family definition that I think it is intentionally left at the discretion of, of, you know, people calling themselves families so that, one, we're not injecting ourselves into that sort of a decision. And two, you know, the whole goal here is just to allow for more housing. And one of the ways to do that is to increase the amount that our existing housing stock can be used. And so although it's not perfect from three to five, you know, maybe it could be more, but I think it's a definite step in the right direction, particularly given some of the goals that we've been discussing for the past two sessions.
Any further discussion? Okay, any other discussion on the entire ordinance? All right, so would you call the roll, please? Now, you had to sit up here and talk.
Mayor Richardson.
Now, okay, come on, yeah. Mr. Langer, would you call roll?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
I'm so hungry.
Would somebody please find something for these people up here to eat?
Granola bars ever. Granola bars ever.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh.
I've got an ice cream cone in my pocket.
Thank you. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry about that. That's where we are right tonight. We're either cold or hungry. All right, uh, ordinance, uh, thirteen eighty-six. Mr. Wilcox.
Thirteen eighty-six.
An ordinance to amend Chapter Seven Marijuana of the City Code of Ordinances.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero three four. It is resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that certain ordinance entitled, entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter Seven Marijuana be adopted on first reading. I so move.
Support.
I supported it. The point of order.
Yes. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay, uh, is there any discussion? Comment?
He doesn't give one.
I, um,
Ms. Uh, Summer.
I just want to say I have honestly no comment on this.
No comment, okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hearing and Seeing, um, did you? Any objections to the roll being called? Okay.
Uh, council, you'd have to open the public hearing.
Would you please, uh, yeah?
It's resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that.
You have to, you just open the public hearing.
I opened the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak, whether virtually or in person?
Council seeing no hands raised virtually and no hands in person. Um, you can go have with closing the public hearing.
Now, you can close it, please.
Thanks, thanks. It is resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that public hearing for an ordinance entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter Seven Marijuana be officially put.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded that for the, uh, open public hearing to be closed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, any discussion?
I just would like to say that I love the volunteerism portion that was added. Um, it definitely would show where some of the, um, passion and money is going. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, see now, would you call the roll, please, Mr. Hulenga?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Six yes and one absence, the motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen, I believe you have the consent agenda.
Actually, I do.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor Proton.
Oh, no problem. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Number one, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero three seven. You're right, three seven. Approving the minutes of February first, twenty twenty-two. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero three eight, approving appointments to boards and commissions. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero three nine, approving a budget amendment regarding the downtown development authority, and I so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any question? Uh, I'm sorry, would you call the roll, please? We don't discuss.
Mr. Jones' chance?
It's the consent agenda.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
The six yes and one absence, the motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, resolution number two, uh, twenty twenty-two zero four zero, authorizing the submission of a TAP grant application for the Huron River Drive reconstruction.
Sure. All right. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four zero, authorizing the submission of a TAP grant and let the rest be read into the record. So move.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Uh, do we have it, any presentation or any words on this?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So, before you tonight, you have a, uh, resolution to approve for the application of, for a TAP grant, which is a transportation alternatives program grant from M.DOT. It's a federal source of funding that we are hoping to use on the Huron River Drive project. Huron River Drive project, as you heard earlier on tonight, is very, very expensive. We would prefer to, uh, use outdoor, outdoor, outside funding sources whenever possible for, uh, projects of this scope. And so, we are hoping to apply for a TAP grant for around $400,000 in order to help it come to life. Since you guys have heard about the project already tonight, I'm happy to repeat it, uh, and equally happy to spare you it. So, let me know your pleasure.
She's got food, she's not.
Can I ask one question?
If there's no, uh, if there's no discuss, do you have a question, Mr. Morgan?
That's one question. Uh, for the application of the TAP grant, are we within the deadline at a comfortable pace so that we could get it out without any penalty?
So, uh, the TAP grant actually has several deadlines per year. The next one is February twenty-third, and then there is another one after that in June. So, if we don't make the, the date on the twenty-third, we will be able to make the one in June.
So, what's the day though? Fifteen. So, we got eight days to meet the deadline. Will we make that deadline if we approve this?
It's possible.
Okay.
And, um, I should also state that even if we don't make this deadline, I don't have to make you do this resolution again for the next deadline.
Thank you so much.
May I ask, what might keep us from meeting the deadline?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
Okay. I'm sorry, it bounced off again.
Uh, the TAP grant is a very highly technical grant application process. It is reviewed by engineers from all corners of the civil engineering profession. Uh, railroad engineers, roadway engineers, materials engineers, signals engineers. Um, and there are a lot of details, and as well as accountants, actually. There are a lot of details that need to go into that application. Uh, as this is a fairly large project, we are definitely trying to meet the deadline. But it is a little in advance of where we had planned initially to be in the plan development process. So, it is possible that we will not be on time for this particular, you know, deadline next week. But we will absolutely make the June deadline in that case.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, see none, would you call the roll, Mr. Hulenga, please?
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
All right, thank you. Uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-two zero forty-one, approving a budget adjustment to facilitate a May special election.
I got this one. Here we go. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash four one, whereas a special election has been called and will occur on May third, twenty twenty-two. And whereas this election was not previously planned for, and there is not funding currently budgeted to administer this election. And whereas all funds used to administer this election will be reimbursed to the city. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Ypsilanti allocated $25,000 to account number one oh one dash seven dash two six two one to be used to administer, used to administer a May third, twenty twenty-two special election, and so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Who will reimburse this, the county?
The funds will flow through the county from YCS.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. See now, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absence.
Thank you. Okay, um, resolution twenty twenty-two zero forty-three, approving the city council goals for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I did miss one. Okay, uh, twenty twenty-two zero forty-two, approving the city council citywide event request form.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four two, approving the city council citywide event request form, uh, resolved by the city council of Ypsilanti, whereas the city council approved the process for requesting a citywide event. And whereas the process requires a form be submitted to the city manager's office that provides needed information for review of council. And whereas upon submission of the form, the resolution approving the event would be provided to council on the next available agenda. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti approved the attached form for city council use for request of citywide events. And I so move.
A second.
Questions, discussion?
One question. If one of us is to fill out this form and hypothetically say it gets denied, is there an appeal process or is it just the end of it?
I think that's a very good question.
I don't think we would deny it, we would ask for.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Might deny it now.
I don't think we would deny it, we would probably try to, um, fix it.
All right, thank you.
Council, if I could add something, if council would approve the event, so if council denies it, there's no one else to appeal it to.
No higher power.
Would you repeat that again, please?
Council approves the event, so if council denies the event, there's no one to appeal the, appeal to, so it's just, it's denied.
So, you're saying that council would be the one to approve the event?
Yes, per the policy that council just approved.
Right, I think I was thinking about maybe the programming in itself, if there was something in there that was questionable, um, even after. Even after the fact, if council approved it, if there was something in there that was questionable, we would just approach you and try to figure that out. That's where I was coming from, and hopefully that's where you were coming from. But, um, yeah, council will ultimately approve or, or disapprove of the event itself.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Uh, see now, Mr. Hulenga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
Thank you. All right, now, we're at resolution twenty twenty-two zero forty-three, approving the city council goals for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three.
Yes, we are. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas in January and February of twenty twenty-two, the city council engaged in goal-setting and budget prioritization exercises with the valuable assistance from facilitator Dr. Morgan Milner and city administration. And whereas, Dr. Milner prepared a report titled Ypsilanti City Council Goal Setting Report, which outlines the results of the city council's goal-setting sessions. And whereas, the city manager has reviewed the presented report and with city council direction, developed three umbrella goals that incorporate priorities set during goal session process. And let the rest be read into the record.
Because it's the, the goals, would you please read them?
Oh, okay. All right. But for your seat belts, the goals are as follows. One, infrastructure. A, commons. Develop Water Street. Summarize progress on Water Street and approve letters of intent with the developer. Redevelop long-term vacant sites in the city. Um, for example, Water Street, two twenty North Park, and Angstrom. Open reinstated park bathrooms. Improve roads. Implement a road pavement preservation program. Um, and for that, complete road improvement projects and road maintenance as funding allows. B, buildings. Improve facilities. Maintenance schedules and upgrades for DPS, police, fire. Create regular maintenance schedules for each facility and create replacement schedules for critical facility equipment. Two, community. Uh, A, safety. Develop a crisis mental health intervention and response team. So, explore partnership with county crisis team, EMU, and Ypsilanti Fire Department to keep our community safe with trained crisis professionals that can de-escalate situations without the presence of armed officers. Continue community policing philosophy. Provide the police department support in these efforts. B, connections. Continue investment in cultural and community offerings and partnerships to enhance access for citizens to the arts and new experiences, community building, with new and innovative partnerships. Increase participation within the community for public meetings. Okay, and then for staff. Um, A is for development. Implement compensation study, so adequately compensate employees through the creation of a non-union wage scale. Implement recruitment and retention strategies for police, DDPs, fire, and administrate, administration. Um, provide human resources recruiting and selection training, so equip directors with proper interviewing techniques. Create an incentive-based program to retain talent and to re-establish parks and recreations department. And then, impact. Select a new payroll and HRIS system. Establish and implement incentive program to increase employee morale. Increase salaries to promote employee retention. Whereas pursuant to section five point zero two of the Ypsilanti City Charter, the city council desires to adopt goals, objectives, and budget priorities for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three to provide the necessary direction to the city manager for allocation of resources for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three proposed budgets. Now, therefore be it resolved by the city of Ypsilanti that the Ypsilanti City Council does hereby adopt Ypsilanti City Council twenty-two twenty-three goal-setting report as the city council's goals, objectives, and budget priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Be it further resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council does hereby direct the city manager to consider these adopted goals, objectives, and budget priorities during the preparation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budgets in accordance with section five point zero two of the Ypsilanti City Charter, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you, it's been moved and supported. Thank you. It wasn't as long as you thought.
It was a lot.
Yes, you may ask a question.
I did, she tried.
And I asked that it be, uh, that you read it for the sake of our, um, the, the public. Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Wilcoxen, did you have a question?
No, I was just unbuckling.
Oh. Okay. Boy, I can remember the years when we read much longer resolutions, yeah. And read them in completely, so, yeah. Um, so, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, see none, uh, Mr. Wilcoxen, would you call the roll, please? I'm sorry, Mr. Hulenga.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen? Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
All right, thank you. Uh, resolution two, twenty twenty-two. Uh, resolution two twenty twenty-two zero forty-four amending the intergovernmental agreement with the Downtown Development Authority.
And I have that one.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
You can hear me. All right, cool. Uh, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the DDA and city are interested in amending the agreement and the parties are desirous of working together for the general greater benefit of the city and its downtown districts. And whereas the city has been providing trash pickup services and holiday lighting installation to the DDA for many years in the DDA districts, the parties desire to continue this service arrangement and memorialize the service and payment for the next twenty years. And whereas this agreement is to modify the twenty sixteen IGA between the city and DDA to more accurately reflect the services provided and cost of providing those services. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the twenty sixteen city and DDA intergovernmental agreement as amended. And I so move.
Support. Thank you. Thank you. Is there a presentation on this item? Hello?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, uh, mayor and council. This item is being brought to you tonight. Um, as you are aware, that the city and the DDA entered into an intergovernmental agreement, um, in twenty sixteen. And in that agreement, there were, um, services that the city would provide to the DDA. And namely, one of them was a DDA police officer. And this, uh, resolution simply amends the agreement to remove the DDA police officer from the agreement. We have not been able to come to terms that were satisfactory to both parties. So, um, this is the best thing for us to do so that they can seek the, outside, I would say, um, public safety needs of the DDA, um, districts. And you can see in the, I should say, in the, um, in the RFL, the reasons why the city has not been able to, um, meet that, um, part of the agreement, excuse me. And so I don't really want to say all those on record, but, um, police services are very important in the city. And at this time, at this juncture, um, we need all of our officers. And we have not been able to provide the DDA district, uh, with an officer. And so we support this. We've been in negotiations with the DDA board and Christopher, the executive director. And this is the, um, compromise that we've come to. And I'm hoping that city council, um, will agree to it. And I don't see, uh, if you've read the, uh, the, uh, agreement, you'll also notice that the TIF revenue, uh, which was thirty-five percent, was reduced to twenty percent. And that's taken into consideration the removal of the officer, um, because the cost to provide that service has been taken out as well. Um, I do have figures. Um, we figured out what the city's revenue would look like. Uh, reducing the capture. And it looks like, um, we would still, uh, net about fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
That's with the twenty percent?
Yes.
What's that, the thirty-five percent?
Um, uh, Reagan, did you have what it was, our capture was at thirty-five percent? I think it was a hundred and some thousand because it included the police officer. And then when you subtract the cost, which was eighty-something thousand, roundabout.
So you're saying the capture now would be around fourteen thousand?
I'm sorry.
You're saying the capture now would be around fourteen?
Yes. Is that correct, Reagan?
Can't have been more than thirty.
Can you hear us? I have it.
I, I believe it's with the twenty percent, it's ninety-six thousand dollars. I see. Decrease from a hundred and sixty-four thousand.
That makes more sense.
Oh, yeah, I can't read.
So it's a decrease from one sixty-four?
Can I ask a couple of other questions?
Sure, yeah.
Uh, actually, sure. Um, I had some questions for Mr. Jacobs, um, being that, you know, really, really, the city hasn't been able to provide this service for a while. Do you feel like the new agreement is, is fair to, uh, the DDA?
Good evening, council. Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, it's good to be with you. Thank you for considering the amended IGA tonight. Ron Akers has provided cost estimates for what it takes for trash can, uh, pedestrian trash can removal and holiday light installation. Um, and I feel that the twenty percent is, um, a fair deal for both parties. Um, the city, I'm sure, has come to rely on some of the revenue from the IGA. And Ron has shown convincing numbers to support the cost and it, it is, uh, a fair deal for both parties. That being said, you know, I'd love to see it, uh, be on a true cost basis rather than a percentage of revenue, which really protects both parties in the case of a major increase or decrease. But right now, with the twenty percent and what it breaks out to, um, that's about in line with the cost of the services provided. And I'm happy with it.
So I get that it's fair going forward. Do you think it's fair in consideration of the fact that the services weren't able to be provided in the past?
What's done is done. And the resources provided to the DDA as a result of the amendments would allow us to more, um, more adequately meet our public safety needs and the needs of the businesses in the district.
Um, and then are there any other? I just kind of feel like it isn't. But are there any other?
And we, I should say, we have been reimbursed and we are being reimbursed over the period of, uh, three years, uh, at twenty-five thousand dollars per year.
Gotcha. So that, that, that's.
So, yeah.
A little more comfortable.
Absolutely.
Okay. Are these, you know, I know there were issues with, you know, dumpsters and things like that in the past. I mean, I wonder if there are any opportunities here for us to maybe take care of some of those other issues. I'm not necessarily saying that has to be an exchange, but, um, maybe in addition to what we're doing, um, maybe a little bit more support for, the DDA.
That and, uh, parking lot landscaping are things Bonnie and I have talked about.
Okay.
There's no denying that the city and the DDA have to work hand in hand. And, uh, there's a lot of need for cooperation. And I could see further agreements in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Morgan?
Well, I definitely appreciate the DDA. I, I definitely think the DDA is, does more work for the downtown than the entire city. I think with the lack of presence, um, of a police officer over time, there may have been some newer opportunities to determine how business owners, um, protect their own, um, property, how they, uh, deal with unwarranted, uh, solicitations. And so, uh, how we work together as a, because if it's been missing for so long, there, there's a cost evaluation about what it costs uh, as a nuisance to not have the officer there. Um, like, uh, is there a way to track that? And the last thing, uh, without, I mean, to, to, now, again, as a new opportunity to provide, um, and we're going to talk about it later here about policing, um, the downtown area, the DDA. And, uh, and I hope private security is not an option in our city. But I definitely appreciate the, the, the revenue that we capture for the, for the DDA in the city. And I hope, and I just want to know a clarifying question. Where it says, I don't know if it's presuming, but where it says these parties at the, at the top of the, uh, resolution, it said these parties, um, are desirous of working together. I get that. And then in the next paragraph, these parties desire to continue this service arrangement and memorialize the service and payment for the next twenty years. Is that literal or is it just jargon?
It is literal. Um, the current agreement signed in twenty sixteen is for twenty-five years. This does not change the term. It only changes the officer being provided in the payment. Um, and so the term remains the same, which is roughly another twenty years.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen?
I have a question for Mr. Morgan. You made a comment about private security and I didn't hear all of it.
Well, I'm, we're going to be talking about policing, uh, the, the DDA area, uh, la- later on. I'm just saying, um, when public, uh, law enforcement, uh, it's a trend around the country in the different states and cities. When private, when public law enforcement doesn't meet the needs, people to protect private property, people look for private securities. And I've wondered if that was a, something that we're going to talk about later, if that's an option within our city.
Later tonight or later as in?
Is it discussion?
One thing I'd like to say is that I know that our, um, police would always be involved if there was ever anything criminal. Our police would still be summoned to, um, to the location. Am I right, chief? So we're not totally out of the picture. Uh, we still are, you know, in charge of booking and arresting and all of those kinds of things. Um, I think actually this may, um, awaken the area businesses to come together um, and, and be creative because I believe they also need, um, some type of security inside. You know, we've had a lot of incidents that happen. You know, like Bobcat Bonnie's in different places and they occurred on the inside. And, um, they turned to us and felt like maybe the DDA officer, but really that's their property. And so I think they'll start to look at it in a different way. And we're always, um, our police department will always respond, um, in, in, in cases where they need to respond. Thank you. Ms. Somerville?
I just had my hand ready to, after Steve's done.
You say you did what?
I was just, I just had my hand ready to talk after Steve was done. I don't want to keep this down.
Oh, Steve had his hand up again. I'm sorry.
No, I was waiting for you to be done.
Okay.
Sorry, I just had it up here as a place holder. Sorry.
Okay, so you do have a question. Are you done?
I was waiting for Steve to complete his question.
I, I somehow I missed the, the discussion here. I was, I was trying to figure out what the plan was.
Oh, for later.
To provide security, but I can, I can have that as part of the discussion.
Um, okay, great. So my comments relevant to this resolution, I think this makes sense. Sorry, um, relevant to this resolution, I think this makes sense. And obviously I wasn't on city council when this agreement was, um, you know, formalized with the intention of having an officer assigned to the DDA. But I think even in twenty fifteen, that was an unrealistic expectation to put on our department and the city. And I also don't think one DDA officer assigned was ever going to prevent bad things from happening. So I just, I think this just makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, chief, I saw you reach for the mic. You have something for us?
Yeah. So, so I just wanted to clarify, uh, the DDA officer, when we had one, and it's just recently that, that we stopped having one. I think it was a couple of months ago. Only worked forty hours a week in the DDA. So the rest of the time it was, it was our normal patrol forces responding to whatever was happening in the downtown. And, and oftentimes, uh, the DDA officers involved in things that they couldn't do all by themselves. So we still were sending officers, uh, to back that officer up when he was working. So there's always going to be a police response, uh, no matter where we're needed in the city, regardless if someone's actually assigned as the DDA officer specifically. Um, the DDA is part of a patrol district. And even when there was a DDA officer, there was still another officer in a car patrolling that same area. So that, that will not change.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jones Chance?
Uh, yeah, so the, uh, the amendment allows, uh, for some outside contracting. I'm, I'm just wondering what sort of services have been contemplated so far? Hey, I'm here for you and your family.
Sorry, Brian, could you, um, could you repeat that with regard to outside contracting? What specifically was the question?
Have any, uh, services already been contemplated? And if so, what might that look like?
So in, in lieu of having a DDA officer, what might, what might we use these additional resources to address the problem?
Right.
Oh, that's been an ongoing conversation for a while. Um, you know, most recently with the refund, we chose to put it into a dedicated line item called Community Health. And that was one of the things we use, was used to pay for the warming center here where we're at. And so the DDA is committed to looking at holistic solutions centered around, um, treatment, centered around creating a better environment to reduce some of those problems. And perhaps not, um, so focused on public safety and, and having an armed officer, but rather other solutions that could be more effective. Um, and supporting, you know, improvements to the environment and situations that often lead to the issues that we're experiencing. You know, at this point, there's been no talk of a private security patrolling the district at all. So I want to allay some of those fears. Um, if anything, we might offer a grant program. So folks can, um, have a, uh, you know, a security, a bouncer, whatever, what have you, um, inside of a, a business. If there were an incident, that might be able to control some of it, de-escalate some of it within the businesses themselves. Uh, but no replacement patrolling the districts, um, in a private security sense whatsoever.
Thanks. I think those make sense.
Thank you for alleviating. Thank you for alleviating those, uh, anxieties.
Any other questions or comments? And I would like to say that I had asked for the discussion to be on the agenda. But with the passing of this, um, resolution and given the time, I would like to skip the discussion. So if you have anything that you wanted to ask during the discussion, would you please ask it now? Okay, seeing none.
I move to call the question.
You can do that.
Are we ready to vote or do we have to do this whole call the question thing?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
Thanks, Brian.
It's been moved and supported to call the question.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one no. I'm sorry, one absence rather. Uh, on the resolution, Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absence.
All right.
Thank you.
Out of the discussion.
Okay, um, we have a few ti- uh, not a hu- whole lot of time before ten. So would someone please extend? We have eight minutes.
I move to extend to ten twenty.
Support.
It's been moved in second to, uh, to extend the meeting to ten twenty. All in favor?
All right.
So we don't have to, we don't have to do the appointments to this ad hoc committee and all that tonight?
That's what we're getting ready to do.
All right.
Quick and simple.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're getting ready to do that now. Okay. Uh, all in favor of the extension?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, the appointment of the Community Benefits Ordinance Ad hoc Committee for the nine forty-five Clark Road Development. And the, uh, CB applications were submitted in our packet. And a new one was submitted the, today. And we saw a copy here.
We still have to have a discussion.
Right. You say what?
The policing. That's why I asked the question.
No, I, that's what I said. No.
We already, we adopted it the agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
Lego.
Go down it.
Okay.
Which is why I asked the question about 20 minutes, like the extra, that's not going to be our time.
All right, and I was saying, okay, I take that point of correction. The discussion on policing in the DDA district, and I had made the statement that I had asked for that to be on the agenda. But with the passing of the IGA agreement, I am also in favor of removing that from the agenda based on time and based on the action that was just taken.
I just had a general comment, in that I have reservations.
Yeah.
That you what?
I reserve comments because that was, so the point here is that I think the solution.
Christopher had presented are great. I was anticipating that there would be some discussion about private security. And that gives me pause, if that's going to be any concerted effort. If it's individual security personnel within a, within a single business, I don't have a problem with that. But if there is a concerted effort to contract for multiple businesses, I have a real issue with that. And I think a lot of people in this community would have a real issue with that. So I just wanted to say that here.
I agree with that.
I have one.
Mr. Morgan.
I just, by the definition, by the word, it said discussion of policing, right? And if it was said, creating a safer environment, if we look, you know, it'd have a different connotation. And policing is just that, like a law enforcement type of deal, because they had an officer. If they wanted to have something else that would bring peace or bring more supervisory as opposed to police, it'd be, I think, defined that way. But I'm glad Christopher Jacobs gave a lot of alternative solutions to just quote unquote policing. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Wilcoxon, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, well, let's move on to the appointment of the Community Benefits Ordinance Ad Hoc Committee. Mr. Helanga, would you please guide us through?
Can I do this one, Andrew?
Yeah, I defer to Councilmember Wilcoxon, who's been the council member of interest on this.
I'm sorry.
Because it's, this is the nature of the CBO, is there's, there's no language in the CBO to control how all this process happens. There's no language in the CBO about how the previous meeting was conducted, or the previous, previous public meeting was conducted for discussing, you know, the nomination process and all that. That's not fair. So what I want to do tonight is say that at the, at the previous public meeting, there was lots of discussion, people put forth people's names. City clerk was able to have polling, real-time polling for this, and so there was, that was presented in the packet as well. People weighed in. I contacted everybody on the committee, I've talked to each one of those people, people that I, you know, I know a lot of them, know some of them, and the ones that I didn't know, I called and spoke with them. I think they all bring something unique to the, to the table for this. We heard from Alice and Alyssa today. With the language in the CBO, we have to consider at least three names that were brought forth from that meeting. We can appoint between five and eight people. And given that there's seven people here, and in my conversations with them, I'm going to suggest that we, I will make a motion that we approve all seven of these people and reserve one that could be appointed within the next meeting period. All right, so move.
The actual area? Do you mean reserve one spot for somebody that lives in poster to their post site? Okay, thank you, thank you. Support.
Great, there is one person, so this, this is John Lusk, lives directly adjacent to it. There's nobody from the apartment buildings there, but I want to reserve that so that we can have more diversity in this, because this has been brought up by a couple of people that haven't applied. There are two people of color on this board, but I want to reserve that last spot.
Love it.
In case in the next two weeks, somebody comes forward, we can recruit somebody, then I want to do that. But I'd like to just propose that we accept all seven applications and approve all of them.
Support.
It's been moved and second. Mr. Morgan, I saw your hand up. No? Okay, Mr. Jones Chan.
I'm on the wrong computer, so I can't see the unredacted applications anymore. And so can someone tell, was there anyone from the actual, any of the apartment communities?
No.
No.
That's, that's the issue, yeah.
Well, yes, well, we said someone in the area. We spoke about someone who lives directly across, who doesn't live in an apartment community at all. So I just, I do want to be sure that we are considering maybe specifically folks who live in the apartment communities, because there are other properties around there that aren't. But yeah, I mean, that's my, that would be my only, my only qualm here.
That was one of my feedbacks as well, yeah.
He wanted to hold one for that, for the apartments area, so. That was part of his motion.
Kind of.
Right. He said that.
From the two apartments.
Yeah.
Why not more than one?
Because we can only have eight.
That's another question. We don't have to take all seven.
I was wondering if the income, gender, and representation was fair based on the people who live in those places?
No.
No, absolutely not.
Well, I think if the closest, the closest property owner, probably.
Wait, what?
I don't know, I'm just looking at this list.
It looked like it's seven, six women and one man?
Me.
I mean, I don't know if the gender.
I'm not so concerned about the gender, I'm concerned about the socioeconomic background of it.
And we only, just so that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wil, Mr. Jones Chan.
Yes, so just so that I'm clear, we have to select at least three from this applicant pool. So we've got three, we've got Mr. Wilcoxon, and you know, that leaves four additional that we could appoint.
Wait, Wilcoxon counts in the eight?
I don't.
Oh, okay.
I just want to be sure I'm clear on the count here.
So, so, Mr. Jones Chan, we have to make an appointment this meeting to create the board. We tried to get as many people to apply as possible, and these are the only people who applied.
So we're just taking the shortfall and saying, since we only have seven, we can do one later because we only had seven. Whereas if we had eight, maybe that wouldn't have been an option.
Right, right.
And we can at least run the committee with seven.
Gotcha.
Okay. So we can still have our meeting, and another person can be appointed. There's nothing in the ordinance, something, somebody else can't be appointed. But the process can continue with these people while we continue to find a person. Every, every person in those apartment complexes were notified.
Okay, so not to put too fine a point on it, but if we had eight applicants, this would not be an option. We would have to take all eight?
No.
Okay.
We don't have to take all seven.
Gotcha. Okay, so even today, we could just take three.
Yeah. Well, no, you have to have at least five.
Five. So the language is a little weird.
If you have somebody else in mind that didn't apply for this.
Yeah.
That had that behavior, it's the time, and since then, any other nominations from another source. You know, I did talk to these folks, they all, they all have interesting.
So to Mr. Morgan's question, we could select as few as five today. And then if we thought that, you know, we could get three more representative members from from the nearby community, then that would be an option. Is that, that's correct, okay. Just want to make sure I understand.
Well, and the fact that we had mailed to every single apartment in the complex, and nobody showed up. So recruiting them is like, we've given them a direct mail, it's happening, and nobody showed up. So it's like, all right, then if we, what more are we going to do to recruit on this one? And to, to be clear, we have another one coming up.
Okay.
I think, again, some of the tactics, again, leaving a piece of paper outside someone home, just, it's, it's, it's a way, again, knocking on the doors away, revisiting, there's different ways. But I think to get the response that we're looking for, we may have to do extra. And if we're going to get adequate, without exhausting resources, we have to get the best adequate look. We might have to do something a little more than just leave paper. Not to say that's not important, but it obviously didn't get the outcome we desire. And if we're in a time pinch, I can see we can move ahead. But I definitely would like to agree with supporting five people from this list. But I definitely think I would agree to leave it open for a few other people, if we can find them in a creative way. And I know it's probably been difficult, slim picking, not slim picking, but you know, there are all these people on this list, seem like great candidates to be supportive. So I don't want to outrule them all, but I would support five.
Can I add a comment?
Yes.
I, I think I'm correct in saying that these people, the seven people attended both meetings, which shows that they're, you know, obviously interested and dedicated to the CBO. I would prefer just to move forward with adopting the seven and leaving one additional open, given how far we already are in this process.
And that is the motion. Mr. Jones Chan.
Yeah, I just, I want to caution against using civic participation in these kind of events as a barometer for who a stakeholder is. And we know there are all kinds of reasons why people, particularly of lower socioeconomic backgrounds, may not go to these sorts of events, one of which being work. I do have a question about how the, not to belabor the point, but about how the mailers work to apartment buildings. It's been a while since I've lived in one. Does it just go to the landlord and they're in charge, or do we, it's a direct mail to their address?
So typically for the zoning enabling act, we send it to the landlord and they're in charge. With the CBO, it specifically says that it has to go to each individual apartment. So we did hours and hours and hours and hours of canvassing to make sure each apartment unit number received the notices. Now, when you're in apartment complexes, some people's mailboxes are full. We did get some email, some mail back to us. But, you know, we kind of did the best we could with the staff we have. And that's something that we've been discussing, because, you know, at the point of sending out all these notices, you know, we were short-staffed. And we had, you know, Ready was out trying to get as many people to come up to this. So it wasn't just the city, it was Ready. And there was a lot of, there was a lot of ways that we, that we are trying through various facilities through our public participation plan. But it is hard, we agree. If I had 10 more staff who was mobilized to do this, I would love that. I obviously don't have the budget for that. We actually don't even have the budget to do the mailings that we're doing, to be very honest.
Right, right.
And we're taking, well, because no one anticipated the amount of mailings, but then also the amount of two CBOs in a two-month process is a big task on staff. Well, we're already short-staffed, and we're literally employing people from anywhere we can to help us. But, you know, even sending out the mailers takes about 10 hours with four staff working the entire time. So we're talking 40 hours just to stuff these mailers. That's not putting together everything. So I understand what you're saying. We should try everything we can, and we do. But there is only so much time in the day. And whenever we ask for volunteers, it typically doesn't, they're limited time, limited availability, and they actually can't help us with really what we need. So it's been, it's been a challenge, and we've struggled. And we talk daily, if not every other day, on how we can better do our jobs effectively.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily think that this is a city problem. But I think we should acknowledge that there are some, you know, external factors that affect people's ability to participate. So if we can, I mean, if we can move on with five, and maybe, you know, Steve and Jennifer, if this is, since this is their ward, maybe take the lead on helping to find some folks that can.
There requires knowing somebody that would be in those parts, and I don't.
I see. Yeah. I mean, if that's the case, then maybe this is just, you know, what we have to do for this one. And we kind of put our heads together and figure out what we can do going forward. I mean, we've got a couple more advats here.
I think that, Mr. Morgan.
I want to say for the record, I will support whatever you think is, because you put the groundwork in. So I will support your nomination. I will support the seven people.
Thank you. I'd like to say that time is moving on, and we do have another CBO coming up in the fairly near future. The work has been done on this one, and I will support going with the recommendations from Mr. Wilcoxon, who has led this process kind of blindly, being the first time we've gone through it, and has done a very excellent job. So if there's no more questions or discussion, I would like for the roll to be called.
Councilmember Wilcoxon.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chan.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence.
Thank you. Board and commission nominations, Arts Commission, the reappointment of Lynn Settles for, to the Art Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Melissa Gillette, and also Joseph Ritchie. They have both been, they have been submitted, the applications.
We can approve them now, right?
Pardon? No, it will be on the next agenda. We just, we're noting that they have been, the applications have been submitted, and we will act on these at the next, next meeting. Okay, that brings us to Ms. Somerville.
Resolution number 2022, wait, just say adjourned?
Read the motion.
I moved to adjourn.
Support.
I've never done it before.
It's been moved and supported to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And please, all of you hungry people, go home or go someplace and eat.